Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes from the last session? Any comments or revisions? And then I think we can put it to a... Do we need to move, or do we both?
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
I'm abstaining because I wasn't there. All in... Oh. All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Passes. Thank you. Yeah. I had it pushed away because it felt like it was in my face. So we have a...
You're going to leave the lady in.
Okay. We have had a small change to the agenda. We moved item I, that was the last meeting on the agenda, item SD 21.48, to consider a request of Cordyceave Mitchell for preliminary plat approval. We moved that up and made it item number three in between B and C so that those two similar items will be considered together. Just wanted to make sure everybody knew that. Okay. With no more further ado, let's hear from Hunter on item SD 21.33.
I'm listening to all the folks here for their case behind me. Some are clapping, some are booing. Some have to stay longer, some get out sooner. Okay. Thank you, Chairman. This is the case SD 21.33, the preliminary plat approval for Klump. This is a subdivision case. It was submitted as a 14-lot subdivision. That has a minor change, as you'll see in this presentation. This is a follow-up to the Klump PUD, which was approved and then amended by the City Council and reviewed by the Planning Commission. This is on 75.85 acres and is located on the screen, as you see, the light blue on the left is the PUD zoning district. The aerial is on the right. The... I've just taken one image from the PUD plan. I do want to take just a second to explain our processes because there was some confusion on that. When we send a preliminary plat to adjacent property owners, it's really tough because we have to send out a letter and then a map, location map, on those letters. So people receive the preliminary plat and question, what's happening? Where'd all the houses go? So this is a reference PUD site plan that kind of shows how it's going to build out. Where you see the houses is one lot. So what we're seeing in this case is a preliminary plat that is subdividing the property into multiple lots. The intent of the PUD is still in place. So there will be 13 lots. I'll explain the difference there in a second. But 13 lots, but it is still around the perimeter of 181 and Fairhope Avenue. It will be commercial. The big lot is still residential, the same number of residential units that was approved within the PUD. And then Unit 3 on Gafer will be limited to the convalescent nursing assisted living type development in the future. None of the lots around the perimeter have a plan yet or a proposed plan. That's the use within the PUD. The PUD mandated that all of those will come back through site plan review, so we will see those in the future. The big lots you see on the screen where the houses are will come back to the Planning Commission and the City Council under site plan review. We're not looking at that today. We're just looking at, as the lots are carved out, drainage, traffic, some of those items. So as we move forward, I just want to make that clear as can be. The PUD, as we said, there were three units. Unit 1 had 12 lots for commercial use, one lot for residential. That was, I believe, 233 town home type units. And then one lot was convalescent nursing or assisted living. This is the proposed plat that will create the lots, and there's only 13 lots on this one. So there was some wetland determinations that was unknown during the PUD review. That is the farm pond that's closer to Highway 181. They've... The applicant has spoken with the Corps of Engineers and talked to staff and in agreement with our wetland ordinance. They are feeling that, but mitigating on-site the wetlands that, on your screen, is the bottom right of the screen, which is the northeast. So when doing so, there was one less lot available because a lot of those wetlands are taking up one of the lots. So you'll see Lot 10, which I can maybe reference here. This lot is bigger than in the PUD, so one less lot. That explains the difference in numbers. And as long as we're moving down in lots, we typically don't make a stink on that. That's in substantial conformance to the PUD as approved. So with that said, I'm moving through some of the comments, and this is a more technical review. Some of the questions asked during the PUD, we did not answer. We've answered those against this review. So all connections with the utilities and right-of-ways will require permitting from ALDOT. Fairhope right-of-ways will require permitting from the City of Fairhope Building Department. That will consist of a right-of-way permit. Water is provided by Fairhope. Sewer is also provided by Fairhope. Capacity needs are still being discussed. Those final approvals and any aid to construction costs will be approved by the superintendent. Power on this one, we'll let the applicant clarify, but I believe this is outside of City of Fairhope's power, electrical, electric service area. But I believe this is split between Riviera and Baldwin.
It's mine, it's 35% Baldwin.
So we've got some clarifications here on the plat. You'll see that as a condition. That's what we're addressing there. It's going to be clarified, and before it comes to final plat, it'll have to be recorded on that. Gas will also be supplied by Fairhope. Those total gas loads are yet to be determined, but they are also working with our utilities, and any easements or potential aid to construction cost or finalizing that will also be approved by the gas utility. A traffic study was completed for this, and instead of getting into the numbers or kind of explaining this, as I need to be explained sometimes, like I'm five, and I've had to ask them of this quite a few times. So the... When a PUD comes in and every use is known, it's easy to do a traffic study. When you have commercial lots that have B2 zoning, there's a lot of uses that can happen there, so you really don't know what to do for a traffic study. Also, the assisted living units. So the applicant has proposed these square footage, and it creates a trip generation. So in essence, what we're doing here is approving this with what they have proposed. Each lot, as it gets developed, will require an engineer to give us trip generations. So as long as they never reach those thresholds, the improvements that they propose to install will be enough. If anything ever gets to a point where it is greater than the trip generation proposed in this traffic study, they'll have really two options: create and turn in a new traffic study that may require additional improvements, or change the uses that they're proposed. So that's going to, by its nature, limit... Every lot's not going to have a drive-through, fast food place on it. So that's what we're doing there, but as each site plan comes online, we will be getting that letter that will help us review those. So future staff members will be looking into that. Site drainage, there's basically a northern and southern basis of this. Currently, stormwater travels underneath 181 through two existing pathways. The drainage was off... We've sent this off for a third-party review by Neil Schaefer for the drainage. The initial comments were included in your report and were addressed by the applicant. There were some secondary minor comments that came back. They did not reach a threshold where we felt like those needed to be held off any longer. They're minor in nature and can be handled with a condition of approval and be approved by the City of Fairhope Public Works Director. As we stated, the site does contain existing wetlands and a plan to enhance and construct those wetlands. A lot of times when people remove a wetland, they buy credits. Those credits might be out of town. So I do give credit to the developer. They're making those improvements on-site. I believe those are at a four-to-one or five-to-one?
Four-to-one.
Four-to-one ratio. So for every square foot of wetlands they were removing over here in the old farm pond, they're adding four square feet elsewhere on the site. That is also helping some of the drainage. So what they've done there is increased the drainage area of that area, and there is a wetland plan within the packet that shows what will be done. We don't get into every final answer of that. That will be done by our building department, and this is within the City of Fairhope, so our wetland ordinance does apply when they go and prepare the permit for that, and it will also be permitted by the Corps of Engineers. The site also has a master drains plan, which, again, as you can imagine, can be tough when you don't know what's going to happen on each of the individual out parcels. The... And the developer has basically provided, and the engineers have provided, a treatment for all those lots and connection points for each lot. So we'll see that in the future. Treatment on a couple of the lots may have to be handled on seven and through nine might have to be handled at that time, but that'll be under our review. And drainage on Unit 2 and 3 will also be reviewed again at time of development. The... Any right-of-way work, again, this is kind of repeating, but any drainage within ALDOT's right-of-way will require approval and permitting. The plans do show... If you look at our packet, you'll see one plan shows a pond on Lots 7 and 8. Actually, should look at my notes here. And other pla... The final plat does not. That's a temporary pond for during construction to kind of help catch any sediment coming out as the permanent ponds are installed. That will be removed. And staff does recommend approval of the Klump subdivision with the following conditions. There's a few of them on here. We're trying to keep our conditions limited, but this is a big project, and there is multiple layers to this. So I'm going to read these really quickly. Traffic improvements recommended by the traffic study and/or ALDOT will be installed by the developer. Final placement, capacity, and aid to construction costs for all utilities shall be approved by the respective superintendent. Aid to construction costs shall be determined prior to application of the building permit. All sidewalks and street trees are required to be installed prior to the final plat application. Uses in Unit 3 shall be limited to those specified within the TIS, or revised TS may be required. We'll clarify that in the red condition. All existing buildings must be removed before final plat application. Landscape inside the roundabout shall be labeled common area with a note that clearly states who is responsible for the maintenance of that. That maintenance should be the entity, someone other than the City of Fairhope, was the intent there. Final drainage comments from Neil Schaefer must be addressed and approved prior to issue of a building permit. The utility power shall be clarified prior to issuance of a building permit and noted on the plat. And the... One in red is not in your packet. We're adding that one. We actually stole that from another review you'll see later, but each development on the out parcel shall supply a letter from a registered engineer that provides the cumulative trip generation at peak hours to verify estimates are not exceeded. A note shall be added to the plat that reflects this condition of approval. That's sneaking up on the engineers as well, so give them a chance if they have a problem with that. I don't know. They haven't seen that. We just added that today. So that's our presentation, and we'll be happy to answer any questions. And the applicants, well, the engineer of record is Jeremy Sasser and Scott Hudson with GMC are here if there's any questions.
I've got a couple of questions for you.
Yes, sir.
And I don't know this, and maybe the engineers can answer this for me, but does every federal engineer capable of predicting trip generations for a given use? My question has to do with whether or not what you've got listed here is actually appropriate or not.
Yeah. And I think asking an engineer would probably be a better...
I'll hold that one over to the engineer.
Okay.
Then the next one, at the intersection of Fairhope Avenue and 181, looking at that corner right there, has... And I guess maybe this is another engineer question, but I'm going to ask you anyway.
Okay.
Has ALDOT... Are they in agreement with those two streets? I can't read the names of them. Right at the corner?
Lafayette.
Street C and whatever the other one, street, this one right here. What did I say? Anyway, are they all having access in and out of that development?
So...
That close to that intersection, which is a train wreck already?
Yeah. So it's tough sometimes because our scheduler reviews and ALDOT's schedule is different. We ensure that there's communications between developer and ALDOT. Because this one's kind of... We've been looking at this one for a while. ALDOT has looked at those and have approved those, from my understanding. We've spoken with ALDOT. There was some question about potentially putting some islands in, so people, you know, going out of Walmart on the Fairhope Avenue, there's a right-out only, but people go left. You know, there was some questions about putting...
I don't know.
Yeah. The stripes are gone, so you're the only one in town that's not doing that. But yes, they have reviewed this and have submitted comments, but I would ask you to ask the engineer on specifics.
But those are not intended to be right-in, right-outs. Am I correct?
They are.
They are not.
They are.
Oh, they are intended to be right-in and right-out?
Yes. The only...
Let's, like, finish questions to staff before we get into the develop... The engineer. Okay. I mean, it sounds like it's...
And that's the... For clarification on that, just because I've got my head full of a bunch of cases, I thought so, but I want them to clarify. I believe the center entrance is the only left turn.
And who deals then with the Fairhope Avenue access points? Not ALDOT?
They actually do. They look at... They don't look at strictly the right-of-way of ALDOT. They look at the intersections and those traffic patterns that affect those intersections. So they'll reach out sometimes further than the property being developed and take a look at, within traffic studies, they'll look at all the traffic coming in.
Would Richard Johnson be looking at this also?
Yes, and we have. He has...
Does the county look at this too?
Not on this one. This is not a county road. So this is all Fairhope Avenue there, is a city road, and Richard has looked at this, and he, I think, he initially made the comment about an island being there to make sure... To help support that, no left turns out of those. Where it's supposed to be right-in, right-out, it shall be right-in, right-out.
Got it. Thank you.
When do we think ALDOT's review will be complete? Did you just answer that?
I'm going to leave that...
That's it? Okay.
Yeah. Good question, but, you know, there's always a...
They have to get the permit before they can build...
They have to permit. So what we do in these reviews, just for... To kind of give everyone on every project a background, we can say a development cannot proceed forward in this review until they get a permit from ALDOT. Okay? That permit is time-consuming to get with ALDOT's reviews and doesn't fall within our schedules. But that also creates a conflict because if ALDOT wants something but our subdivision regulations do not... When it's their right-of-way, we typically like to review it, comment on it here, and see the changes that we request, and then make it conditioned. You'll see most of these, when ALDOT's involved, you'll see those conditions where ALDOT must review and permit. And if they require anything we didn't consider, well, that cost is on the developer. So that's why those conditions are on quite a few, especially with the development we're seeing on 181 and 104 and those Alabama Department of Highway roads.
Are there any questions for... Any more questions for staff?
Okay.
Would y'all like to speak on behalf of the developer?
I can flip back as you come up.
Yeah.
Arrow is left and right. Back will get you.
Okay. Jeremy Sasser with GMC. First question was about the trip generation. There is a standard chart that is approved by ASHTO, which is the American Standardized Chart for each use and type, and it talks about how many trips are generated, and then there are curves to spread that out over the times of day. So any engineer would go to that chart, pick it out, and should give you the same numbers for each use.
I don't know anything about how y'all figured that out. I'm just curious. But if you had a drive-through hamburger place, would it be the same for every hamburger place?
It would. It is based on the square footage, but it...
It'd be...
There are some. There's a chart for no drive-through, and there's a chart for a drive-through.
But there's some hamburger places that are 10 times the volume.
It's not going to specify brand. It's not going to say if it's Chick-fil-A.
There's not a Chick-fil-A stipulation in there.
I was saying more along the lines of Whataburger. But I mean, but it's just a... It's a standard then?
It is a standard, yes, sir.
But the original question, you're saying any engineer could perform that. We don't need to specify which type of engineer?
No, ma'am.
It's a model that they plug in.
Yeah, it's...
All good.
Now, there's some requirements.
So our subdivision regulations call out how to do the traffic study, when to look at counts and their peak hours, 7:00 to 9:00 a.m., 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. The staff doesn't have any leeway to answer, ask for anything other than that. The Planning Commission does. If any... I'm not saying it's warranted on this case, but we did discuss this on the Valanta. That was a good example where peak traffic wasn't really during within those hours.
Yeah.
The Planning Commission can change the scope geographically of the study area or the time windows that should be studied.
So when the individual plots come back for a site plan review, that can be done if it was a different use?
I don't...
And a revised... Is it saying a revised traffic impact study would be... Could be required?
Well, I think the traffic study, at least our intentions in our reviews, the traffic study that applies will apply during site plan review, as long as they stay within that... Under that trip generation.
That's what I'm doing.
Then we're not going to require a new traffic study or new scope of study or time period study.
Unless the uses go beyond what was specified in the original traffic study.
Right. And Rebecca, you're kind of where I am, was thinking about uses. It's not necessarily about the use. So, you know, you see a thousand-foot of... Four units of a thousand-foot of fast food or restaurant, I can't remember off the top. It's not about that use. It's the trips generated by that use, so that's where the numbers work in plugging in the model. So we're going to look at trip generation.
Well, the way... I mean, the way the recommendations are worded is that the uses should be limited to those uses, and then if that...
Yes. And that's... We kind of clarified, Ida, the condition four with nine. So...
I guess the last bit of four is that a revised TS may be required, so there's maybe a little bit of leeway in when that kicks in.
Yes. Well, it... I don't want to beat a dead horse, but it just seems to be that if you had one fast food restaurant in this development, that would be one thing, but as you started to get multiples... To me, it's not a summation of A plus B plus C. It would be A plus 2A plus 4A. I mean, the amount of traffic generated in the roadway and the road system and in that intersection is really going to be the driving factor to whether you have something that's workable or not.
Well, they...
Anyway.
Okay.
Did that make sense?
If the... You got them confused with the A plus and the B plus.
Well, if you have four, if you have one drive-through fast food place, okay, you'd go to the tables. But if you had five in that B2's area, then when based on...
They're limited to 1,000 square feet of fast food restaurant.
9,000.
Sorry.
It's nine of 1,000.
Okay.
Nine thousand.
9,000 square feet, but you're not going to...
So how many is that? 90 and...
You're not going to get nine 1,000-square-foot restaurants, drive-throughs that come in there. It's really just a way to get the trip generation there. You may get a five and a four or three threes, but I...
We're going to get you say it again, right?
Yes.
That's the...
Well, and what happens if... Jeremy, is it fair to say fast food restaurants are one of the highest trip generations, a commercial M2?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. So if, for instance, the first three lots were developed as fast food, that might trigger the threshold of the trip generation. If they build, you know... That's not limiting to nine units of 1,000. We're looking at trip generation. So they could build four units of 6,000-square-foot units, but that might hit the trip generation. Nothing else could be built without revising the TIS. So it's... The TIS does take into... It looks at the level of service at the existing intersections plus any new intersection. I heard you talking about just the roads, but it does take into account... This one specifically looked at the Gafer intersection, the 181, not... Yeah, 181 and Fairhope Avenue, and then checks back on Fairhope Avenue and up 181. So it doesn't just check the new intersections, it sees how it affects it as a whole.
Right. Okay.
So I have just a real basic question that I'm trying to concur and learn this, but... So out of what I'm seeing, everything turns south or turns east. There's only one way to go north, and that's out of the main intersection that's right there across from the pecan place.
Yes, ma'am.
One way to go north.
Yes, ma'am. That is an ALDOT... They wouldn't allow anything else.
So everything's going south and everything's going east on Fairhope Avenue or south on 181? I mean, west, yes. West on Fairhope Avenue or south on 98, just...
Except for that one intersection, so their stacking is in internal roads, so it's not blocking the highway.
That's what I'm trying to... I think the Western Most one on Fairhope Avenue does allow a left. Have you got the entire TIS in here?
Yeah. Do we peek?
I just... I've got it. We've got a snippet there, but you can look at that site plan. See what... That's the best you got right there.
The Western Most Street would probably be your left or right.
I believe it is. I believe the Western Most is a full access.
Right.
Because it is away from... It's further... It's far enough away from the existing intersection, gets you out of those turn lanes that are there, and allows access.
Would they... Would we assume those will be signaled?
The one on 181, the big one eventually could be, once it hits trip generation. It will not be Day 1.
I'm assuming it's far enough... They've got a limit for how close their signals can be.
They do.
So that one would be far enough away that it would justify a signal?
It does, but there's no intentions of the one on Fairhope Avenue requiring of lighting of any type.
Jeremy, are they doing... Are they widening all the way down to this area from the work they're already doing by the waters? Is it coming this far down?
No, sir. The widening essentially ends at 104, and then south of 104 is where they kind of taper back in. So no work here at this time.
The Western Most Street will be a full access, but the one closest to Fairhope Avenue is a right-in, right-out, and Public Works Director Johnson did ask, would that be a concrete island to prevent people from trying to do that?
Better make it high.
Yeah.
That is a Fairhope... That is a City of Fairhope road, so if he tells me to make it a foot tall, we'll make it a foot tall.
Do you have any more questions? All right, then, let's open the public hearing. Thank you very much. Actually, I did want to comment that I thought the design, that linear, synchronous design of the wetland was really nice. I think that's a really attractive way to do a wetland.
I do have one note, just a reminder. We kind of... Forest for the Trees issue, we've been focused so much on that drainage, we missed the pond in the middle, so when we do plat, we do need the buffer shown on the plat for the pond and the northern side.
Up at the top.
And that's our fault for not reviewing. We were kind of focused over here, so we can handle that. That only be required...
Yeah. The long-term plan is to leave that alone and use it as open space, so we can...
We'll make sure that gets taken into account. Thank you.
Okay. So now we can open the public hearing. Does anyone here like to speak to this item?
I would.
Can you come up to the front and please state your name and your address? We did receive, you know, a few...
We did receive, you know, a few letters that we, we have had a chance to.
I didn't write a letter.
Okay.
I'm a better talker. Okay, I'm Alice Eskridge, E S K R I D G E. I live at two oh five six five Lowry Drive. I back up to this development. I was really angry when I got this. This is what I got. You cannot read it. You absolutely cannot read it. There is no place in this letter that says, okay, go to this website, go in and click the agenda and go in and see everything, all of the documents that are pertaining to this. So that got me started right there, and I'm not an angry person. Then we had one day to respond to this letter, to respond by email to this, the planning commission. So they can decide if our questions were good enough. And it says on here that they would like my comment to be considered. Who is gonna consider my comment?
That's what we're here to do right now.
Okay, but, okay, but why do I have to send that in? I mean, are we just talking about?
I mean, I don't know, I should just.
Okay.
We'll hear you out. Actually, the process that I should have reviewed that happens right here is that we, we try to hear from everybody, ask people to keep it to about three minutes. If you can, and because we have a lot of items on the agenda. And then we have, then we respond. Or some places it's more appropriate, the developer will respond or the staff will respond. So you don't have to send in a letter. Some people like to because then we have more time to review and consider your comments than we do just when you speak in person. But of course, at a public hearing, anyone is welcome to come up
Okay.
and speak to the issue and have your, have it be heard.
Okay.
But I will try to not be responding immediately. We'll try to get everybody's concerned and then respond to them all at once.
Okay, it's just rude. And, you know, I am not against development. I, I totally believe in property rights. I believe that the clumps and whoever this developer is, they, they should be able to do within the law or the zoning what they can do. But it does make me angry when I look at this big old forty-three acre of nothing.
Wait, yeah.
I mean, and, and let me ask you this. And I, I, I just don't understand the procedure, I guess, because I've never had to deal with this, deal with this before. But are we here, are y'all here to approve all of this? Are you going to, is this the final approval for all of these lots?
This is, as Hunter addressed this a little bit, but this is just the subdivision, the actual, the, the multiple.
This is just to create the lots?
Yeah, this is just separating into three lots. It is not in any way what is going to end up happening on those lots. And previously, there had been a review for accordance with the subdivision regulations in terms of street trees and sidewalks. That had happened at a previous meeting. This meeting is merely, that's why there's not as much information on it. It's just breaking it into those three parcels.
Okay, so once that is approved, those parcels, so what's the next step for these apartments? I mean, the apartments aren't even on this, and I know that he went over this.
There will be another chance to do that, and I, it, when they come in for a site plan review, then that will also be reviewed and there'll be a public hearing.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, so that, when there is.
No, no public hearing on the second.
Okay, sorry.
No public hearing?
But comments will be received.
Okay, let me ask you one other thing. I was going through all of these notes and things.
Excuse me, Ms. Eskridge, would you pull that microphone down with it?
I'm sorry, I'm short. I was going through all these notes that y'all have online, and it was talking about that there could be in, from anywhere from two hundred and twenty-three units to four hundred and ten. I mean, when is that decided and we aren't gonna have, I mean, that's like twice the size.
I think really, well, I need to get the rest of your comments and then have Hunter come up and address what was previously voted on and went through a public hearing, and that might be a little bit clearer.
Okay.
Because all of those things were previously approved. But I, I just don't wanna take too much time with other people who might wish to speak and other items still on our agenda. I do, I think it's a very good point. It would be really useful if that letter had a link to the, the website with the agenda, that that would be an easy way for people to get in, things in a format. I also have readers and couldn't read that myself.
Well, it just automatically sends up flags because if you're not transparent, you can't be trusted. And that was my first thought. Why are they hiding all this stuff? So I'm, I've said my two cents worth.
Well, we appreciate your comments.
Let, let, let me, let me answer one thing. You've got a, and I'm with you. I can't, you saw a little while ago, I couldn't.
You can't read it.
Yeah.
It's okay, but to know that the details of what we're discussing tonight is nothing more than three, of dividing this property into three different parcels.
Thirteen.
So in terms, excuse me?
Thirteen.
Thirteen.
Yeah, they're three, they're three units.
Three units. I'm sorry. I made you say units. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And the different, and the three units are what we're here to discuss. So in terms of other details, there really, there really is nothing else for tonight. But as Rebecca said, there will be other, other meetings that we will have that will be dealing with the actual development of the properties within those three units.
Okay, and we will get letters that we, I mean, we will be able to know about these meetings.
Yes, and we always encourage y'all to come.
Okay.
Yeah.
And no hiding here.
Well, that's good because if you're hiding something, I'll find out about.
This committee is not responsible for letters. No, and, and we don't send letters for site plan reviews. The letters go out for subdivision requests. So that is, but the agenda is made public every month and the public is always invited to attend. And we have some people with the press who are pretty good about getting things out there.
Okay, so like when you go over the units or how many units apartments are gonna be on this unit too?
Two thirty-three.
And that's already.
Two thirty-three?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
To answer your question.
Is it twenty nineteen?
Okay, I have in.
Twenty nineteen.
A year ago. So, so that.
See, and that's what's confusing too, because there was stuff from a year ago in twenty twenty, and then I went in and looked at this stuff, and some of it was totally different than what was in twenty twenty.
So as you can see, Ms. Eskridge, it's the process. You just really have to follow the process. And a lot of people in the public that are not, that are working and have their lives, it looks like we're hiding things because the process continues if you don't follow it.
Yeah.
So you really have to follow it. And all these meetings are public. All you have to do is call the city clerk and you get any information you need. Okay? Or the planning department. I didn't wanna tell them to call you because y'all already under water.
Well.
So, but if you wanna put yourself out there, I'll tell them to call you.
I think also it's important to know that every month we have, we have a meeting.
That's right.
And the public is encouraged because our agenda, Ally puts our agenda on the city's website for that particular month. We meet first.
The first Monday.
Monday of the month. It happens to be the first day of November. And so every month, it wouldn't take much to go to the web, to our web, to the city's website, pull it up and plant P and Z, pull it up and just scan through the agenda. And you'll, you'll get a, an overview real quickly of what we're gonna be looking at.
Okay.
And you're more than welcome to. Have input, come visit with us.
Do you have a bar that you can open up? You'd get a lot more people in here if there was a bar.
Thank you, thank you for your comments. Is it, is there anybody else in the public that'd like to speak to this? And, and again, I would, we'd like to ask you to please keep it to three minutes so that we have time for everyone who wishes to speak.
Just, do you want my name?
Yes, please.
Gary Gover, three hundred Lincoln Street. The, let me just call the outer parcels, the out parcels.
Sure.
Those I imagine are gonna be business, perhaps commercial. Are, are there gonna be some kind of architectural and operating requirements that are gonna cause all of the exposed faces of whatever's built on those parcels to be reasonably attractive?
Of course.
Uh, well, and thank you for, we're gonna answer everything at once and get back on track with that, but we will address that next.
I'm Frank Connell, I'm two zero six zero five Lowry Drive. I sent you a letter. And I just want, wanna make sure because I heard talking about stormwater retention, but I heard nothing about fixing the stormwater retention problem that we have had, that I have had in my backyard. I've lived there for twenty-two years, been told numerous times that once that property behind us, the clump property, became city property, they would take care of our problem. I didn't hear anything about taking care of that problem today. Now, I'm kind of unique in that there's only two really lots to get affected by the storms. So it is mine. And then, cause I'm in the south east corner, and then the southwest corner also gets the same kind of problems. So all, all of the water runs down. Now, I could fix my problem by bringing in more dirt, but that's gonna make the people behind me in, up the street in worse shape because they have no place to go. So anyhow, two mayors ago, Mayor Kent actually came to our property. He's seen the problem and he, he acknowledged it should be done and he's, he, I realize he's not here anymore, so anyhow. I just wanted to bring up the issue that I would like an answer to that. The other thing is, I know probably by the law, you only have to tell the people that border the clump property just about this meeting, but everybody in our development is affected.
Sure.
And I think that in the future, everybody in our neighborhood needs to be, sent a letter ahead of time and told about the meetings like, like this one, and not just those of us that border that. In, in conclusion, I assume that the, that my letter will be answered.
I think our, our intent is to address comments tonight, not to have a reply.
I think we, I think we addressed three of the four. There was the question about, uh, a three two question, okay?
Well, they said something about that. And I also said something about my live oak because I'm concerned with the live oak.
We can, we can, we'll definitely address that. And, and I would ask, because just for feasibility for the city, they do have legal requirements for the notification. And so they, they, they can't really invite an entire neighborhood, but when you are, as a neighbor, when you get that notification, you know, you guys.
That's what I did.
Yep, exactly. I mean, that, that's kind of what we all have to do, is just go to door and tell other people who you think would be interested and ask them to come as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And there are signs posted on the property about the pending subdivision application as well?
Good point. That's, that's why we post those yellow signs, to try to capture people who might not have gotten a letter.
Hello, I'm Katie Ray, R A Y, and I live at two zero five eight zero Lowry Drive. And I appreciate you letting us come and speak tonight. I wonder if there are any traffic evaluations for on Gafer Road, just our neighborhood coming out. We have two entrances to our neighborhood, and it's already, like you said, between seven and nine and then four and six, it's already hard to turn out of our neighborhood. So I was wondering if, you know, if, if that would be looked at as well as possibly adding a stop sign or adding, you know, whatever needs to happen so that we can get out of our neighborhood once we have additional, you know, all these additional people coming in for the various reasons. I also wanna reiterate what was said about the drainage issue in our neighborhood. There are people who in their backyard get out their little kayaks when it rains hard. I mean, it's, it's already an issue. And so that, to me, is a little bit worrisome that, you know, all the development that will be taking place and, and filling in some of these, these ponds and creating new ones and, and the placement of those. As well, I hear that there's going to be a walking trail added in behind or as a buffer or something behind where the houses on Lowry are adjacent to the property. And, you know, I, a walking trail sounds nice, but it also sounds like that's where everybody's gonna be taking their dogs to, to their business that live there, you know, because they don't want them in the parking lot or in their houses doing that. And I wonder too if any of those trees that were already really thinned out because of Hurricane Sally will come down because of that, or if, if the city or the developer will provide additional buffering with, with that. And so those are my questions as of now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else from the public that would wish to speak?
I'm Rebecca Serta. I live at two oh five nine five.
Can you lean into the mic?
Sorry, two oh five nine five Lowry Drive, Rebecca Serta. I'm reflecting on the courier and it stated that our water quality is not so admirable. And I'm not only concerned from my generation, but the next, that this needs to be taken as a priority when we approve all the development, which not only affects us, but the futures. And then the other question, will the tree ordinance stay in place?
Which tree ordinance? The, the one that we have standing now?
Yes.
Is that what you're speaking, okay.
Yes, that's the.
We can answer that really quickly.
Yes.
Cool.
It's not going anywhere.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, are there any other public? Yes.
Good afternoon. My name is Jenna Freed. I live at two zero six one five Lowry Drive. I know others have already mentioned it, but, but the drainage was my main concern because we live right on that edge and our yard gets flooded almost all the way up to the house every time it rains. And so that definitely needs to be considered. Whatever's going between the new development and our apartment, that really needs deep consideration as far as how that's handled and how the drainage is handled. I know today you were saying that we are here to approve or discuss the three units, correct?
Or, I misspoke when I said three. There, there are three units, it's thirteen.
Thirteen.
Okay. It's a thirteen lot subdivision with three.
Okay, so the, the large one in the center, has, has that already been approved as residential only? Or is that what we're talking about today?
I think in the, when the responses will go, that's not what we're talking about today. The, the P U D dedicate, designated what would happen in each of the units, and that was residential, but we can re-review. I think it would be helpful just to re-review what the P U D stated that was previously approved, just so everybody knows.
Okay, exactly. And the, the same with the outside. Is that commercial only?
Correct.
And it's already been approved to be commercial only?
Yes.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good afternoon. My name is Matthew Jones. My address is two zero five zero five Lowry Drive. I think y'all have kind of answered my question, but I won't speak anyway because I've been, I was verbal about this when it was county property and the city said, let's bring it into the city so we can control what actually is developed there. I know I'm not gonna change anything. Before the record, I was against this being brought into the city for this very reason. There's gonna be apartments or something behind my house. And I've lived in apartments, I've lived in my homes, not opposed to either one of them. There's a time and place, and that's perfectly acceptable. But if you're gonna give me a voice, I'm gonna use it. Look at Arbor Gates. It was very nice, very high-end. Ten years down the road, the place lived there every single night. My fear is, ten years from now, the, the place will be living in my backyard every single night. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, are there any other public comments? Does anyone else wish to speak to this agenda? Okay, we're gonna close the public hearing. We have, we have quite a few things to address, and we're here, heard several people speak to concerns about pre-existing stormwater issues.
we're here, heard several people speak to concerns about pre-existing stormwater issues, several questions about what is currently approved in the PUD, and different ways that people talked about the buffering.
Mm-hmm.
So if you'll.
And the architectural.
Yes. I think I've got a pretty good list that I can address, and if there's anything on drainage that we need an engineer to speak to, we'll let them do that. So first, let's look at the pre-approvals. The process here, when it was, well, and I'm going to even go before this. So the first PUD that came in with a conditional annexation in the City of Fairhope was similar to this, but had high-rise apartments. And it limited that, I believe, it was 233 units of apartments. So then. Am I got the number right? I want to make sure I'm quoting that right. Two thirty-three now. Two hundred and thirty-three now. Maybe it was two, somewhere around there. So they didn't increase the units of apartments. So now we've got triplexes and duplexes here. It's very similar to Old Battle's Place, if anyone's familiar with it, is the similar type development. That was approved within the PUD. Within a PUD, that's a site plan. That doesn't get into all of the details. So that is uses. That would have been the appropriate time if we were to discuss if apartments were, you know, permissible or not. That would have been the time to do that. So those numbers, and when you see those numbers, those, I think 410 was mentioned in a staff report of the previous staff report for the PUD in December, because there was an original proposal of increasing that. That was kind of negotiations back and forth with the city and the developer to get it something manageable and kind of get back to what you see on this plan right now. The, that was the PUD approval. Then we're following up with the lots being created in this preliminary plat. They will have to go out and install the internal roads, install the street trees, and all of those things, and then come back with a final plat. That's when it gets recorded, the lots are actually created, and if there's any roads that become public roads, they're turned over to the city. The lots can then be developed, and we may see an application between there for a site plan review in between now and then. But that's when the image you see on the screen in the middle will come through with site plan review, and then we'll look at architectural details. Now, there's a limit. We don't have many form-based codes. There's very few on the commercial lots. I know we had some architectural guidelines on siding of the building and parking being attached to the rear of the building. But as far as architectural, we have some. You can't have metal buildings seen from the roads, but there's otherwise little architectural details unless we have form-based codes. So that's limited.
And just to interrupt for one, if that is something people are interested in, participating in the comprehensive plan would be a good time to express that, because that's the opportunity to get it into our zoning ordinances, more of a form-based that has a little more architectural oomph without making everything look the same.
Thank you. I want to get into the, what is the intent? Because I've been working this in three separate cities, and every case you get the same criticisms about our letters, about advertisements, all of those things. The intent of a public hearing, and it's, I'm sympathetic, because it is confusing to people that don't deal with our world. We have to go back and look at our codes and spend hours reviewing them because they're bulky, and they're not streamlined, and it is, it is hard. But it's where details are needed to make sure drainage and traffic and all those things are done correctly. But when you have a public hearing, the intent of those laws, state laws, are so everyone knows there's a meeting, and that is a chance to come speak to the decision-makers. So in this case, it's planning commission. In some cases, it's planning commission making recommendation to city council. So that's where the public hearing is. In this case, planning commission is the final answer. So that intent of a public hearing is what our letters are for, and there's some challenges there that we're faced with. Having a standard, so adjacent property owners for some, three property owners within 300 feet on other cases, those are a standard. And if we go out and pick something outside of that standard, we're now breaking laws, because we're picking certain people and saying, you're more important than this group over here, and where do you stop that? So that's why we're consistent in our sending of letters. We go above and beyond that, though. We do get the letters out. The only thing required is a location map where it's at, and that is what we send out. It is tough on us on the link, because at the time we send the letters out, we don't have the packets up. We don't have a link. So those are always found on the agenda. We try our best a week before. I believe it's only 24 hours when you have to have the agenda and some packets available. Don't quote me on that timeframe, but we try to get those out on the website a week before. We're short staff. I believe this one, we got it out six days before. You know, that was a, but as you can see, it's a very big packet. So, and we put signs out, that's not required. We don't have to post anything on the website. We don't have to post that public output. And I want people, when I say this, I just want people to understand that we're not hiding anything. Everything we do is extremely public. And it's sometimes just hard to get and require some exercise of motivation.
Is the website itself in the letter? I mean, a link is actually not helpful when it's a paper letter in the mail. But the public hearing is closed, I'm sorry, but I was asking, that in itself would, might be helpful, just directing people to the website.
That's a good idea. Putting a link in a letter can be really long.
Well, it's kind of useless in a.
In a letter, yeah. So we've looked at that.
But just directing people where to go to find it when it is ready would probably be.
I think that's a good idea, and we can certainly include a link to the calendar where we put packets and minutes. And the links do change. We'll have to just put a link to the.
We're talking about a mailed letter, though, so the link, that was, I said the wrong thing.
Well.
Just a web address.
And then.
You know.
And then directions how to find the link.
Yeah.
And here's what we're trying to accomplish by the phone number being placed on there in our email. If we put a link in.
To get an.
Are you going to, then somebody's going to go, well, where at? Because now I go to the calendar, but they need to know which month and which, you know, which calendar to look at. So we're just here. Send us a question. I can't find anything. We do that and do that quite frequently. So looking at, moving down the list.
Stormwater and buffers and traffic study, and a lot of those were outside of the.
Right. So I do want to address in the letter from Mr. Connell, there was a couple other questions, tree protections. There is a 45-foot buffer along this western boundary that will not be disturbed. There is a sidewalk through there, but that can meander, and we've already discussed that, to avoid trees and things like that. There's no.
There is some tree protection also shown in the subdivision.
Yes, that's correct. Well, and this, being in the city, I want to be clear, this is in the City of Fairhope. Our tree ordinance does apply. You know, the recent state law that was passed removes that ordinance from applicability and unzoned in our, outside of our corporate limits. This is, however, within the city limits. So any of these lots that are developed in the future will be abided by that, the red soils and clays, the erosion control, the wetland ordinance, all of those ordinances. Forty-four. Yes, that is actually bigger than required. So buffers against adjacent residential property is 20 feet. That was negotiated in the PUD due to the density. And, you know, there was, we did address that and made that bigger, more than twice as big as required by our zoning ordinance. So, and the, I'm saving drainage, because that's where we might have to get some help answering. The water quality issues, you know, that's one that is being looked at by our public works, not public works, our water superintendent all the time. I believe we've got a new well that's being worked on right now, coming online. But that's not something that this development is.
I think she was talking about stormwater pollution.
Yeah, there is no water quality issues.
I did hear water quality. I didn't know if that was just.
The city does not have any water quality issues. I just wanted to put that out there.
Well, I think we're talking about drinking water versus like the bay.
Yeah, yeah.
So I don't.
There are, I mean, there's legal, during construction, there's legal requirements to protect, prevent siltation and erosion and prevent runoff.
And I'll get to that, yes, in the drainage. So I believe we're down to drainage. So, and this comes up quite frequently as well. You know, there are known issues in places that are drainage issues. And as hard as this seems, it's almost impossible to make a development fix the sins of the past. What our subdivision regulations say, what they have to do for this property is treat all of the water, not cause any future problems. You know, so they've got to take in the water. We have the 10% rule, so that looks at upstream water. They have to bring that in, treat it before it leaves the site. So that, and that has to happen at a rate less than or equal to that it happens today. So that's, you know, getting into these, we dealt with that recently on a few other cases. And, you know, when somebody builds a house in a floodway, and I'm not saying that's happening on this, in this case, it's impossible to fix that for a developer building downstream. So all of the regulations we have in place have been scrutinized quite, I mean, this has been going on for, since December, since this was originally approved in the PUD. We've been reviewing this and going back and forth with drainage, so.
Well, and just, I mean, to summarize just the letter of the law and then make sure that I'm summarizing this appropriately, but it seems like several people had questions about pre-existing stormwater issues with runoff. And so with any new development, they're required to not increase that, but they aren't required to decrease it from what's already happening. So sometimes they do anyway, because they're creating these ponds and they're creating places to hold it, but they're not required to make it better than the undeveloped situation, you know.
And that's where I think, asking the engineer, because what I don't know, engineer of record, we did discuss this. I think they were very aware of some of the issues at White Grove. So I don't know if there is an improvement to that situation in the design. And I'd leave that last one for the engineer.
This, I mean, I'm no young whippersnapper, but when I was a very young child, this has been in its current condition for over 70 years, probably more like 100 and some odd years.
Wow.
Whatever the problem is with the drainage right now, in that, in the subdivision that was developed after this was already a cultivated field, is really not a result of, I don't think, of the cultivated field. Now, what has happened in and amongst the trees, I don't have any idea. But if you guys could just look at it and see if there's anything that you can do. I don't see the drainage actually from your topo maps.
Yeah.
Topo map, it doesn't appear that the drainage flows toward that, toward that subdivision, maybe kind of down toward Fairhope Avenue.
Yeah, it's all coming.
Downstream.
It appears from the topo, it's all coming either into the swell that's down here in the northeast corner or further down. Is that right?
Yes, sir. White Grove drains to that southeast corner and goes to the property that is directly south of White Grove into an old, looks like an old farm pond with all the trees around it. And then it drains onto our site into the wetland area that we talked about earlier, kind of in the middle.
The top middle?
The top middle, yes, ma'am. Thank you. So it goes through another property before it comes to us, but it does eventually come onto us.
Where does it go from that, from that little pond?
It goes down to the crossing under 181 up near Gafer. There's a crossing probably 500 feet south of Gafer.
Is it running northeast from there? Uh, yes.
Yes, sir. More east, east northeast, but yes, sir.
Over land?
Uh, yes, ma'am. Currently over land. When the multifamily piece develops, it will be put in pipes and directed down to some retention ponds that we have on site, that we are building on site.
Will that pond be a wet pond?
Yes, sir. Both ponds will be wet ponds.
Do you think that that subsurface drainage pipe system will help with whatever issues there are along the west property line?
I would like to say that it would help.
I guess, I was just asking.
We can, we will do what we can. Surely, we will not make it worse, because we can't, we can't legally. Plus, we wouldn't do that.
Excuse me. If you did a burn, that Klump put up in that water for my yard is not going to the pond. If that burn was there, it would go in the pond. But Klump has a burn. Come out and look at it, my yard, anytime you want, and I'll show you what I'm talking about.
Okay.
Thanks.
Yeah.
I have no objection.
Okay.
I'm glad to do that.
Okay. So the pond you're talking about is in the lot 10? Or the enlarged?
Well, we actually have ponds that are not depicted in this, that are in the multifamily area. They're probably, they're in the northeast corner and the southeast corner of the multifamily, which would be the.
In those little corners with the trees shown on this plan.
Since we got into the full drainage design, those ponds have actually gotten bigger.
Okay.
Than what is depicted in that, not smaller, a lot bigger.
I had that question about the difference in the drawings as well.
They're, yes, the ponds are probably an acre of ground each, five or six feet deep. So they're, they've got plenty of capacity in them.
Okay.
We actually are decreasing the runoff that is going under 181 because of the size of those ponds, and because of the constructed wetlands that we have put there as well to help with that water quality. Our retention ponds meet the water quality standards of the city. Then we have that water routing through those constructed wetlands to help clean it even more and.
Where does it go from that?
Then it goes into Calpin Creek.
But I mean, are you going underground then?
It's going under the pipes under 181. The wetlands tie directly to the right-of-way of 181, and it goes to those pipes.
Well, we know, we know for a fact that our 100-year storm happens about every third year.
Not going to disagree with you.
Yeah.
So the bottom line is that if you can help them, you will.
Yes, sir.
There were a couple other questions that may not, there was a question about a live oak tree on the Cannell property that comes in to this property, and I'm assuming with the 45-foot buffer that you're probably not going to be.
We shouldn't be getting near it, no, ma'am.
That's correct.
Okay, that's, we just wanted to make sure we were clear. And then the last thing that we have not touched on was, there was a request in here for us to, well, I guess let's finish answering.
No, I think that's the only lingering question that we can't address. There was a request for a fence, and I think that's.
Was a request for what?
A fence.
A fence along the western property line? That's not a requirement we have in our PUD.
Fence beyond the buffer?
Yes, sir.
But there's a 45-foot buffer.
Right.
Yes, yes.
That's so.
And the trees, and we've got a tree ordinance that protects any significant tree that's in that buffer.
That's correct.
Okay.
They are.
Okay.
Let's go.
Okay. Are there any other questions for the developer or for staff? And we've answered all that. The public hearing's closed. I'm sorry that we can't answer more public questions. Discussions from commissioners or motion?
Did you close the public hearing?
Yes, I did.
Okay. Ready for a motion?
Unless anyone has anything else, then sure.
Okay. I would move case SD to 1.33 PUD that we approve subject staff recommendation.
I'd also like to make sure that we get in the add the wetlands buffer to the plat and also add that raised island on what is designated as Street E for the ingress and ingress.
Number one, you want to add it to number one?
Yeah.
So the wetland, if I may, the wetland stuff still has to be passed per the review of Neil Schaefer? Is that correct? So we, I just want to.
The final drainage, there's a couple lingering things that Neil Schaefer's review that Public Works will approve.
Right.
The wetlands ordinance is under the permitting, so that's Eric Cortina's, is under review of that. So when the construct, when the permit for the land. of that, so when the construct, when the permit for the land disturbance to go and create the roads and all of those things, he will make sure the core permitting, that all of the wetlands ordinance is met at that point in time. And I don't.
It's just that one of them was, others were noted.
He was talking about buffer on the western.
Yeah, there's one buffer that wasn't noted.
Oh, the pond?
The, the, just on the plat.
Yeah.
That language. I would be a little hesitant, because unless you are comfortable with the, maybe with Richard Johnson, just say, you know, maybe not being quite so specific.
Doesn't, doesn't, doesn't Richard deal?
All, all required buffers.
That's Richard's job.
I don't, I don't think we need to get into that.
But we could just say all.
We need Michael manage what.
All required wetland buffers be noted on the plat.
I'm sorry, what was that?
We, we can say that with the, the condition that all required wetland buffers be noted on the plat.
For the wetlands?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, we were just talking about that, raised island.
Oh, 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 sorry.
No, I may look into it.
That'd be perfect, that'd be perfect, just as a reminder for.
Ally, do you have that? Do we need to restate?
Who wants to?
Could you restate it, please?
Somebody has to.
Okay, here, I got it.
Before you restate it, also include.
Case SD to 1.33, PUD, move that we approve subject staff recommendations with the wetland buffer delineated on the plat and end of the story.
And the island.
As presented.
The islands are Richard Johnson's responsibility.
Okay.
And my feeling about it is we don't need to tell Richard how to do his job.
Are we good with that motion?
Yes.
Okay, second?
Do you want to clarify the staff recommendations as presented, because there was a different one from your report?
Yeah.
So, just clarification. Minutes will reflect that.
Okay. Second? Do we, do I need a second? Thank you, Clarence.
I second.
He's already seconded with the amendment, so. He seconded with the amendment, so you, that's a third, but we're good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
None.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, everyone. All right, second item on the agenda.
We got a mover, I got a.
Yep, well, we've consolidated some of them, that should help.
And you were 55.
Second, we have a, a item, ZC 21 dot, dot 13, the public hearing to consider, the Cordy Cave Mitchell zoning. I'm greatly summarizing, and I'm going to let Hunter address it. And we've clumped the other Cordy item immediately afterwards.
Okay. So, this one's a pretty quick portion. This is a rezoning request of Cordy Cave Mitchell LLC to annex into the city of Fair Hope 21.24 acres with a zoning designation of B2. This is located on the northwest corner of State Highway 181 and State Highway 104. The zoning map, as you can see on the left, is our standard beige color representing unzoned property as it currently stands. The map on the, the aerial photo on the left shows the land in its state when we, as the aerial map shows on the county right now, there is, it is under construction at the moment with a Publix shopping center being constructed. When we first received this case SD 20.31, we received it as a multiple occupancy project for Planters Point Shopping Center. That was approved in November of 2020. That included approval for 15 units on one lot, as illustrated on, on the image on the screen. Those 15 units included a grocery store, which we now know is, is a Publix, and along with 14 units of additional commercial attached to the building. The site work and construction of this shopping center are currently underway. Anybody going by 104, 181 knows that that's there. As Chairman mentioned, we do have a proposed plat, a case, concurrent case for this that creates the lots, as you see on the screen. So, you have the lot one, which includes the building of Publix and the 14 attached units, and then the, creating additional eight, eight out parcels. So, being the zoning case, what we looked at here, the zoning is currently unzoned, but proposing B2. The lots two through nine will not be formally created until the reported plat happens. At that time, they will inherit the B2 zoning if this goes through conditional annexation and zoning goes through. The exact uses are unknown for the remaining lots two through nine. Each will be reviewed when developed for the pertinent codes and ordinances. Being within the, the city does allow, you know, those future developments to be reviewed pursuant to city regulations. And just a quick note, and Mike might touch on this again, I might touch on this again. We're, we're, two of us have been juggling projects, so he might answer some questions. But this, this section of the road, it will connect to future developments and has been requested to be taken over by the city of Fair Hope as a public street. Richard Johnson saw no problem with this, we agree, so at time of final plat, all that will be done. All other roads shown on the plan will be public, or private, privately owned and privately maintained. This B2 zoning, I've got the zoning or the use table here for reference, but we, staff recommends approval for this zoning case to, it is not a PUD. It is to B2, not a PUD. That is an error on the screen, so I want to make sure we're getting that clear in our recommendation. It is recommendation to approve rezoning to B2.
Okay.
And that is general business district.
Okay, is there anything, would the developer like to speak to anything? It's pretty straightforward.
I have nothing.
Okay. Do we have any questions, developer? We have a public hearing, I guess we have to, the public hearing. So, any, would anyone in the public like to speak to this item? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Do we have a questions or discussion or a motion?
I have a question. Again, it has to, wait a minute. Where, I think maybe I'm on.
Where the rezoning and annexation.
2113.
Yeah, just, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Never mind, that's for the next one.
Okay.
Yeah. Do we have a motion?
I have a motion to approve.
And this is a recommendation to approve, Julie.
Excuse me. Oh, that did, yes.
She did.
I move we recommend to the city council approval of ZC 21.13 rezoning to B2 with conditional annexation.
Perfect. Do you have a second?
I second that.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion passes. Now, we have the second related item, item SD 21.48 for the preliminary plat approval and subdivision.
Thank you. So, this is familiar. The MOP was 15 units on one lot. This request is to create a nine-lot subdivision, and just to be clear, subdivision is a subdivision of land. We're not creating nine separate subdivisions with a monument sign and multiple units. It's a subdivision of the land, same property as we currently, as we looked at in the previous case, but for reference, once again, the zoning map is on the left, and you'll see that that's unzoned, the aerial is on the right. So, the site as shown, and this is what was currently, what was, one lot is being subdivided into nine. Lot one includes Publix in the, the attached buildings, and the rest of the lots are out parcels with no current plans other than B2 zoning. Utility connections, and this was, a lot of this was reviewed in the MOP. So, utility or water and sewer are provided by Fair Hope, and upgrades of the current system are being negotiated concurrently with the conditional annexation. Power is provided by Riviera Utilities. Gas will be supplied by Fair Hope. Total gas loads are yet to be determined, but they are working with our utilities to figure those out. Our utility supervisors will be the final say-so on those. A traffic study was completed and recommended for the modification. So, there was a traffic study for the MOP, be creating these extra lots, amended the traffic study, and some extra improvements were, were required. So, in linking the storage bay links on the eastbound right and left turn lanes on 104 and providing an exclusive westbound right turn lane was required in this project. All of those work in Aldot right of ways and permitting will require their final approval, whether that's drainage or road improvements. There was one thing we, when the traffic study was done, it included the 16,500 square foot of leasable area in the building, the grocery store, and six out parcels. This is a request for eight out parcels. So, how do we deal with that without halting everything for a, another month? And I think that's where the condition you saw, you'll see the same condition where, and I think the applicant was agreeable to this, it allows them flexibility, so they can put eight doctor's offices on there and not trigger the, the number, the trip generations as if it were a couple of, of fast food places, but we're making the same recommendation here that the engineer provides us with trip generation on each of those out parcels as they're developed. And if they hit the threshold shown here, that will require new, a traffic study and potentially any improvements that are not in place today. The site and drainage, this was all previously reviewed and drainage approved under the MOP. The, the master drainage plans for the site was required, and each individual lot will be required at the time of future permitting to have an engineer verify compliance with the master drainage plan. Again, drainage work in the right of ways will be permitted and approved by Aldot. Both, both of the perimeter roads are, are state roads, so 104 and 181, there is not a city or county road there. The land plate, landscape plan provides internal and perimeter landscaping. The required green space is 10%, and the site is providing 15%. At final plat landscape, I'm, I'm not completely happy with a landscape plan that's kind of a, done in unzoned areas versus zoned areas, but we didn't want to hold that up, and frankly, I won't, landscape architect, the landscape plan staff engineer, but, and Frank admits that. So, that we will, you know, is it time for permitting? We'll, we'll make sure those comply with a tree ordinance. There might be a few more perimeter trees needed to, to meet the 50-foot on center or, or whatever's required around the perimeter of those out parcels. The, I said, the, this has not changed any major components of the MOP case. All of this was looked at and being enhanced with this preliminary plat. Staff does request, request the final plat for this subdivision satisfies the final MOP procedures. So, remember in MOP procedures, we created a process where there's a final, a preliminary review and a final review in case we needed easements or things like that. The MOP shouldn't need that since there's now a final plat. If easements are needed that were unforeseen, we can handle that at final plat. That will be creating the public right of way, that will be creating easements for the sewage, sewer lift station, and potentially some of the other utilities, and maintenance and bonding will go along with those at final plat. We do recommend approval of this, of SD 21.48 with the following conditions. The final plat of this subdivision will satisfy the final MOP procedures for SD 20.34. Traffic improvements recommended by the traffic study and/or Aldot will be installed by the developer. Final placement and aid to construction costs for all utilities shall be approved by the respective superintendent. All sidewalk and street trees are required to be installed prior to final plat application. This is dependent on the approval of the associated zoning case, which will be decided by the city council. The landscape plan shall meet the requirements of this tree ordinance and be approved by the city horticulturist. And each development on the out parcel shall supply a letter from a registered engineer that provides the cumulative trip generation at peak hours to verify estimates are not exceeded. A note shall be added to the plat that reflects this condition of approval. If there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer. And Frank Leatherwood is here with the applicant, representing the applicant.
I, I just have a quick question, I think Art has asked before, but what happens if one of the, if, if these out parcels get developed into doctor's offices? And then, in five years, one of the doctor's offices, a new tenant shows up that's a, I don't know, some kind of high-volume tenant?
Water burger.
Thank you, water burger decides to convert the doctor's office.
Yeah. You know, that, that's a good question, because what we're looking at in our reviews is when they're initially developed. I will tell you, this is something that I think Aldot is really pushing, because they're, they're in the review process of new developments. It's a challenge for them and has been for quite some time when something's redeveloped, because there's no trigger other than a building permit, so nothing, but they are definitely looking at limiting the ingress and egress onto the right way, where you're seeing a lot of right in, right, right out, so.
But do we have anything with our, with MOPs, if we have a change of use, and say that, that triggers a code review, you know, is there anything that goes back to the MOP and the original traffic estimates?
As long as it's within B2 and the use is allowed in B2, stay the same uses, you know, it, it's a conforming use, so there's nothing that re.
Can't really tie the feature.
You don't double dip, you know, if, if, if something goes in today, even a fast food restaurant goes in today, and then everything gets developed out there and they change it to a doctor's office, well, the doctor's office might trigger it in 20 years. So, it, it's hard to, to, you know, that moving navy, you kind of get your shot as the lot's developed, but, and as long as they stay with a, a conforming use, you know, if it, obviously, if it's rezoned, if it's, you know, becomes a non-conforming use, we, we don't require a traffic study under a standard building permit.
Okay. Anybody else got any questions?
And it's hard to, it's hard to change when you have redevelopment, I mean, looking future, as long as it's complying with the zoning, I mean, it's hard to trigger and come back 20 years, 30 years, 40 years from now and say, you got to come back and based on the issues, try to trigger another review. I mean, none of our subdivision regulations or ordinances really kind of look to that.
But in a multiple, if, if that's the, if that is the conditions of approval of a multiple of an MOP, it seems like there needs to be something to tie those conditions to future redevelopment, otherwise, it's a huge loophole.
Because we're always, we always seem to be behind the power curve on everything, and, and we're looking at today, but we're not looking at tomorrow.
Well, and an MOP is just the units. It doesn't look at uses at all.
So.
Yeah, if it was a PUD, and, and we.
That would be an ordinance, I mean, that would be locked in.
Then it would be.
Right, then it can be amended.
And that kind of goes back to the zoning, too. I mean, if you're complying with the zoning requirements of the use, that, that applies for future changes.
And we can't.
You can always change the ordinance.
So.
Okay.
But I, I get the sentiment, but.
Here we go.
Here we go.
Same question on streets, there's two streets closest to the intersection. Have those been approved by Aldot?
The review is in process. I don't, I don't know, I know the.
Unless they're right in and right out, certainly on 181 on the four lane, you're not going to try to shoot somebody from the, from.
I believe they're right in, right out.
That street across four lanes of traffic to get going north. I mean, I'm assuming it's right in, right out.
Yeah.
But I don't, I've got to the point, I don't assume anything.
Right, well, and, and what we're, you know, we do have the benefit here of time, because the MOP, this is the same exits that were included there, so if we can ask, you know, for point of clarification, if we can ask the engineer that one specifically. I don't recall from memory, but.
Well, I don't expect you to, but anytime you get something at an intersection of this magnitude, in two streets entering a development that's going to be of this, of this nature, with this kind of traffic, having a street, two streets, but I don't understand why there's two streets right there anyway. I mean, you've got, you could, you could shoot them all up to the other, the, the other street on 104 that's further away from the intersection, you certainly could do that, and, and I don't care as long as they're right in, right out, but if they are supposed to be anything but that, then it makes no sense. Go back to that same, because that's, okay, that's, that's question number one, so that's the streets. The parking on, now, when we get these lots, these commercial lots approved, tell me again, do we. me again, do we, we had multiple discussions on Greeno Road about parking being in a rear. Do we have a requirement here where we're not going to end up with just a, a real big ugly mess facing both 104 and 181 with all the parking in front and buildings are sitting back behind?
Right. We.
Right along the same line, then, then I'm also asking about the sods and, and the integrity of a development that is, is different than just the standard block.
And this was really Gary's question on the previous.
Yeah, form based.
And the, the challenge here, no, we don't have a PUD. This is a request for B2 zoning. So anything within our zoning warrants that deals with appearance of a building would be in place as it pertains to B2 zoning. The, when we do a PUD.
Well, we passed the B2 zoning, this is just a request for the subdivision.
Right. Right. And we don't have anything in the subdivision regulations about architecture.
We passed the B2 zoning, this is just a request for subdivision.
Right.
Just to be clear.
We have to futuristically get into a form based type coding. It's something I've talked to Hunter about, but right now we don't have it.
You know, we had a, we had this discussion when we tried to do an overlay district on Greeno Road, but we also, everybody has been very forward thinking, knowing what was going to happen on 181, it was coming, it was just, it was just a matter of time, well, obviously times here based on what we've seen tonight. And it, and it's got to be before it gets completely away from us. Walmart is about as ugly as it gets. It was just like the Walmart that was up in Daphne once upon a time.
Yeah.
And, and I guess.
Let me.
There's got to be, there's got to be a way that we can influence that now.
Let me, let me get to that one because you got a list where we, I want to talk about that one real quick. So while we don't, this, and this is a subdivision case, we don't have anything specifically about architecture or, or buildings, to address that, the access for these buildings are, the out parcels are going to be from the internal drives. So by its nature, if you have a 20 foot and a buffer along 104 and 181, we don't have that specific requirement that we had in the clump that parking has to be behind the building, but by its nature, if you're accessing there and you have the buffer, there will be at least leading to that where you're have, have a screening from that huge parking lot. So, you know, the, it's, it's not exact, but none of the variables in each of these cases are different. So this one came in, is unzoned, set of press.
I know y'all don't have much to do, you know, when, from day to day, but.
Yes, sir.
I just, to me, it, it's critical now before 181 gets away from us. And, and, and once we get precedent set, that it's, we're just going to let it turn into just a jungle, just, just with no rhyme or reason to the development along there, we just, it just seems to me it's a no brainer to try to figure out how to do something. You don't have to go very far down toward Daphne to, to understand what, what's happening down there or up, or almost out to 13. Okay, that's, that's two. Green space, I got a major problem with green space. And I know this is a commercial development, but come on, really? I mean, everything in green on this map, on this plat is supposed to be green space? That's realistically, that's nothing more than, than a, a streetscape. I mean, it's nothing, there's nothing to it. It's a long, narrow band of trees.
What's the percentage?
And, and, and to me, you could take part of that or you could add, actually add to it, to do something and break this large parking lot up in, in some form or fashion to just have something that is more aesthetically attractive than another, another slab of asphalt. But I don't call, I don't call that a, I don't call that green space.
Well, and, and Art, you, you'll remember the argument over whether green space be counted in a highway construction setback. So one thing that's not shown on that plan is the green space that lies within the highway construction setback.
Well, that's right, but you can't count it because eventually it could be utilized on a highway park.
It could be, right.
It's kind of like putting your, it's like putting your retention pond in, in the, in the construction setback. If they ever want to do it, now you don't have, now you don't have a retention pond.
And we don't have that on the slide, do we?
Anyway, that's, that, the parking lot and the green space, I, I just, I'd love to see these bigger parking lots just busted up into something a little bit more aesthetically attractive. I don't want a fountain, that would, sculpture of that, seagulls, walruses, we don't have walruses down there. Anyway, that's, that's my five.
Streets, the same, I'll let Frank answer some of those. We, we talked with the, about the building. You know, green space was something we debated quite a bit and a commercial is not providing the same green space as a residential. The common area is there or not and, you know, the, the, what we were focused on here is the circulation and pedestrian circulation and while we require it along a pedestrian corridor, notice that the private roads, there's no requirement for that, but they're provided. So the sidewalks that you see adjacent to the big parking lot, and I'm going to flip back to this, this one. So the sidewalks that you see along this perimeter, that's public, private roads, so not required, so counting those as circulation and the green space that was in there and the street trees, you know, that was the logic we applied to that, right or wrong, that's what we did, so.
You know, green space to me is more, and I'm not talking about standing on the top of, of the tallest mountain in the Rocky Mountains and looking at a vista out toward the Pacific Ocean. That's not that kind of vista, but it's something more than just basically what you expect out of your streetscape trees, which to me is really a lot of what that is right there. You have to, you have to have trees along those streets anyway, don't you?
Trees, the sidewalks are not required, but when, once, we allow, we allow green space, you know, there's, there's some of that leftover green space that we've allowed in many projects that we don't count, but they put a walking trail in there and all, okay, well, that's green space now. You, you're providing amenities and access through that, so, you know, that, that, that was the logic applied to, to this, you know, where it's not just street trees, they're actually providing sidewalks that are not required.
Well, you know, me, green space also has something to do with, you know, with environmental issues associated with heat, you know, and, and park, those, those parking lights, lots like at Walmart, I mean, come on, really? Anyway, I don't want to beat the dead horse, but that's a, that, that's another issue.
So, and we do have a, or there's a proposed condition of acceptance to, that has to do with the landscape, or was that in the last one?
Well, maybe, but that would come later.
Yeah.
We have to hear from them.
I agree, I, I, well, I share the concern, I wish we had not initially approved an oversized parking lot. And I, I think green beach, green peace, green space should, you know, provide shade, provides habitat, it provides stormwater management services, it can do a lot of things if it's, if there's a little bit more of it than this.
Okay.
Do you have other questions for Hunter or for the developer who?
Well, I'll let.
The engineer who'd like to speak.
He's turning it on you now. See how he jumped, he jumped.
He jumped fast, didn't he? Frank Leatherwood with Thompson Engineering, I'm representing the owners on this particular project. To answer your question, Aldot has already reviewed and approved all of our turnouts. The two in question that you were concerned with are right in, right out with a concrete island. And also.
That thing is that concrete.
That thing is huge. It's extremely large. And also there are dedicated deceleration lanes leading into both of those entrances so we can get traffic off of the main line and get them out of the way so that main line continues through without as, as much conflict as you normally would have with right turns, even those, they will slow down traffic. To speak to your green space, I agree that the green space that's provided probably does not meet what you expect as green space. But what we're trying to accomplish there is I want to get people off the main road and into that development, give them something nice to walk down, something nice to beautify that site, because I agree, Walmart's hideous because it's got no real tree landscaping. We're bringing the trees into the site, using those trees for shade because we're planting within, within a 20 foot wide buffer as opposed to a five foot island. And I agree, there's way too much parking, but we're dealing with a user that likes, has their desires and we would have loved to, developer included, would have loved to shrink the parking down, but that's where we are and unfortunately, that's what they want. So we're, we did provide.
That's what Publix wants?
That's what Publix provide, wanted from us to do. Now, we did meet the requirements from the city to provide a large area, anything over the minimum number of parking, we provided that all as pervious pavement. So we're trying to deal with stormwater issue and try to do that treatment issue that everybody, the city is interested in, people are interested, I'm, I'm indifferent. I, you know, I think there's, you know, there's a definitely a healthy balance between.
What, tell, tell me about, what, what were you referring to, to your papers where?
The inside, the, the X, the city code requires that anything beyond what is required parking is got to, if I provide more parking than is what is the minimum required, I'm required to put that in as pervious. And that's what we've done to the large part of that parking lot to the north end. There's a large section of it, I think it's approximately 20,000 square feet.
Is that the piece that's got the checkers, check.
Yeah, kind of the checkerboard look to it. I'm not sure what you're looking at, but it's that, it's, it's in front of the small shops, is, is that area, that is all pervious pavement for everything that was over the minute, the, the minimum requirements, so.
You might want to take another look at that and see if it goes over the minimum requirements and 25% of it should be pervious or 30, instead of just the additional, because it's not like, it's not like it's grass, you know?
Do, do you ever do, do the bigger parking lots mostly pervious?
That is a trend that we're seeing, that a large portion of the big parking lots, large part of the cities are now requiring that pervious section and I'm, I'm all for it.
They've got some great products.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
I did this sidewalk on Mobile Bay in front of my house.
Well, we did the same, I, I did the Publix back when Arthur did the one at there on 98 and that was the first one we ever did with actually anything pervious. And that was, came from the city is something we added there.
So why aren't we doing this parking lot totally pervious and only a percent, a small percentage?
I'll be honest with you, it's about money. Pervious pavement costs a little bit more.
I understand.
So it was a balance and now we did what the city required of us, you know, we did, and we tried to concentrate it in the front parking lot, not just push it off to the side, we put it out in the front parking lot where there's the largest impact of stormwater. So we're, we're trying to make it the best we can for the money that we have to spend.
After three Publixes here, they want to make it the best they can.
They do their best.
I'm not impressed.
Sometimes it comes down dollars and cents for, for, for the developers and the people that are using it and it's an unfortunate part of the business. But I think we've tried to give you the best we can, within reason what we can do and make it financially feasible for them, so.
So, so was this a Publix decision or?
Of the.
A, a, a developer slash owners.
The size of the parking lot?
Yeah.
That was not on the developer.
Not on the developer?
No, sir.
Wasn't on the, on the, wasn't on the.
I won't blame the other person in the room, yeah. I just say that it was not the developers.
When they got their second Publix now, come on, that ought to be a little bit, little bit of slack.
So, but the, the, the owner does, does, does appreciate your concept, the large parking lot. We, we, we see the, the concern because it is only going to be full two times a year.
Well, y'all met our requirements, we might just need to make our requirements more stringent. I mean, that's a general comment.
Yeah, we should have been ahead of that curve.
Y'all are the one that most stringent around, so, you know, feel good about that.
It's not stringent enough.
Does anybody else have any questions for?
All right. Make a motion.
I move to approve case SD 21.48.
Wait, I never opened a public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry. No, I appreciate it, there, since nobody wanted to speak, the last one was kind of easy to, let's open the public hearing, would anybody like to speak to this item? Okay. My apologies that we almost.
Carrie Gober.
They got you.
My, my great concern about this intersection is the, what facilities are going to be there
to open it up for pedestrian traffic, bicycle traffic, these other than vehicular modes of transportation. I'm gathering that in, in doing traffic studies, there's nothing done to meet a requirement for pedestrian traffic or to try to estimate the volume of pedestrian traffic that'll be attracted to these places, but I'm going to, I'm going to guess that some of these out parcels are going to be trying to attract people to come down on Friday night, Saturday night, have dinner, you know, walk back home or whatever. And I don't see any forward thinking going on about how this intersection is going to accommodate pedestrians or bicyclists with safety.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak in public? We're going to close the public hearing and Hunter, would you like to address the comments about, it's an interesting point, our traffic studies are vehicular traffic studies, but.
I would, and I, and I would like to address that in a little, I don't know if y'all just saw the, the sag in my body over here when it said, we're not forward thinking.
Well, don't, don't take it personally, just, let's just talk about.
No, no, but I want to explain the, the challenge we face in that because again, when we have unzoned property, there are subdivision regulations that are provided. We meet technical merits and we can certainly amend those regulations with, with time allowed that can go to any extent possible to, to create that, but I do, if you, if you ask some of the developers around, we're too egregious already and we're, we're the most forward thinking or one of the most restrictive in that. And a lot of those forward thinking ideas can happen when we have zoned property. This is now being requested for zoned property and, you know, any of the out parcels can, can abide by those ordinances. So I do want to say that all traffic pedestrian, you know, there's crosswalks that will be installed where, where pedestrian walkways are, are creating, intersecting with, with streets, you know, those things are done, you know, the, the, one of the concepts behind the Greeno Road overlay was to preserve that strip. And what we've tried to do, even with unzoned property, is, is really, and you'll see that in Harvest Green, the next project, anything along that corridor, we have in zone, in the tree ordinance, a 20 foot buffer, preservation buffer, you know, that, that provides the, the trees along Greeno Road that creates a distinction from that and Airport Boulevard, you know, that's what we're, we're, where some of the green space is here. That's not just a setback out there, that's a green space area that i- is meant for green, it's not a parking lot. So that forces it off the road even more than the highway construction and the right of way does. So, you know, it's not perfect and I don't think we have all the tools to make it perfect and that, that's one of the challenges we face daily and, and I completely agree with all the comments, but it does hurt sometimes when we, we're in the trenches.
So Hunter, if I may, Hunter, so, I mean, you have multiple occupancy going in this, is this the right one? I'm thinking correctly, right?
This was originally approved as a multiple occupancy.
Not anymore.
This, it still has that, we're good.
That's what I thought, so it's going to be a lot of people. It's going to be people walking, it's going to be people wanting to ride their bikes. So is there any way that we can improve on, on pedestrian side and not just the traffic side when we do these studies? It's, I mean, you know, we have, you know, we got a lot of bike riders in this town, a lot of people like to walk, you know, as far as outside stuff, healthy people and reading and looking, that's the way a lot of these. And reading and looking, that's the way a lot of these, you know, village concepts are going. So is there anything that we can do to kind of, you know, think about that? When we doing the buffers, can we just say, hey, well, this much is bike trail or walking trail, or is that something, I mean, is that hard? I'm asking for public, you know?
Well, I think you'll get, see a good example of that in the next cases where we've looked at that.
Okay, very good.
And that requirement for kind of a mixed-use trail and when those blend and providing even within a highway corridor. Yeah, Clork Club had that requirement. So, you know, if that's within the 20-foot buffer, if you want a trail, mixed-use trail, did we land on the sidewalk out there?
No, we were going to bring them through, trying to promote that internal circulation.
That's right, it looks like there's a sidewalk coming down 104 and then in towards Publix.
Yeah, so it'll bring you to the 181 intersection so that you can make that interconnectivity if it ever happens in the future. But then, we're moving them through the sub, the actual interior of the development to promote them to go on inside, you know, it's all about getting the people in, but also to not just put them out on the roadway.
Right.
You know, you don't want to have, you know, I wouldn't personally want to walk down a four-lane highway.
So it's there?
I'd rather be inside, and that's why we moved the green space interior with trees to make it a little bit more of a friendlier wall.
So that pedestrian accessibility is there?
Yes, sir.
Gary, is there?
What we don't, you know, the bike racks is about the only other thing that could be an additional amenity, but it is, it is nice that you clustered the trees along the sidewalks and have those, got them off the highway and moved them through.
I don't know that you have bicycle access on a four-lane, relatively high-speed four-lane, do you?
Maybe only the brave.
I haven't seen it, do you? I mean, you can play off of 104, but I don't know about it.
Well, in the city, they do, but in the rural areas, not many, no.
I won't do it. They don't exactly go slow.
Right.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, we close the public hearing, and then, any further discussion, or is it done?
Ready?
Yes.
Okay. I move to request approval for SD 21.48, Plankton Point, subject to staff recommendations 1 through 7.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion passes. Okay, we've had a request for a little break, since this is running a little long, let's take a, let's take a 10-minute or less break, a five-minute break.
Five minutes.
Five-minute break.
Five minutes, sorry.
Okay. Okay, so we, we're now back to Hilltop, so next item on the agenda, ZC 21.14?
Thank you. This one, I hope, should be pretty easy. We've had two preliminary plats for Hilltop subdivision. Those, Phase One is, homes are being constructed, so you can see exactly what was done, final, and had final plat with, can't build a home until final plat. So we've got Phase Two, the eight lots in the back are shown by this blank area. So that's a little unique, what you see here, most of the time when we have a conditional annexation, we'll show a big piece of property. Here, you have multiples because it's already been platted and recorded as individual lots. You have some individual homeowners, there are lot owners there with homes under construction. So this has, all the technical merits of this has been reviewed fully, and they are, there's a request for annexation into the city limits. The site layout, and that's conditional annexation to a PUD, so the site layouts you see on the screen consist of the residential lots as approved in the preliminary. There were some slight differences there from any of our standard zoning, so the PUD basically matches the site plan, the setbacks as shown in the table, in your packets. The, really, I'm going to get to the one difference here, in the bottom right of the screen, right here is Lot 29. That is being proposed as a commercial, I say "commercial" loosely, but, but a mixed-use lot, if you will. And that is specified, the use there is a summary within the narrative provided by the applicant, kind of how that's done. So there's some restrictions, but, but really a vision of how to develop that with any, without any specifics. And this is really the only thing that, if there's any questions on, in my opinion, of course, we can look at anything else, that I'm really going to spend any time on, and I'm just going to leave it on the screen, if you haven't had a chance to look at, it's kind of a mixed-use with a community house, cafe-type, coffee, bakery, beer, wine, limited food items, bed and breakfast suites, you can see the list there, fitness, yoga, arts, crafts, small gallery, and/or professional office space. That allows some flexibility for the developer to develop this lot, but it must meet all the requirements of being a zoned property and the setbacks that they have instituted within the PUD. Setbacks are kind of restricted by the, Section Street actually has a pretty large highway construction setback, so that's a big limiting factor. Landscape plot, Lot 29 shall meet the requirements of City of Fairhope based on its determined use, and additional planning buffers will be installed along the adjacent property lines as buffers to preserve privacy. And if you notice right behind that lot, when you drive down Section Street, there is the wooden walkway that was additional, you know, so I think the preservation of the environment, trees, everything there, sensitivity to that surrounding, was developed in the character that Fairhope is striving for. So the green space plan, this is just, it's already been met within the PUD, but, but just to show how that's being met. The only thing we've got to figure out in the future, if this is annexed in and the zoning is approved, this was built in unzoned county, so the county, the roads either were or are planning to be turned over to the county for maintenance, acceptance and maintenance, we'll have to work with the county and the applicant to get that resolved. I believe one of those has already been turned over and has a bond on it with the county, so I'm not sure exactly how to make all that happen, but we can handle that at staff level if the approvals goes through for annexation and resuming to the PUD.
Sound like a good job, Richard Johnson.
I think, unfortunately, we usually are the ones that have to put the bonds and all that stuff together, but-
Go back, go back to, no, one more, that, go, one more forward.
That one?
No, one about, Lot 29, all the words.
That one? The words, there, okay?
What is, okay, so what is, what would this Lot 29, what zoning classification would it carry?
This, this would be the zoning, so-
PUD.
Yeah, within the PUD, so within a PUD, you can, you can say, I'm going to be, I want on this lot, you don't have to say B2 or R1, you can say, I want either a fast-food restaurant or-
Do you mean, you mean, do you mean use within, like allowable, like, you know, the use table, is that what you mean, not zoning, the use table?
No, you don't, you don't, you're not restricted to that.
I don't, I don't get off on, it could be this and it could be that, but what could it really be? Could it be anything?
Yeah, it could be, it could be, I mean, it's limited to these uses right here.
I'm sorry?
It's limited to this use, so if somebody came up and said, we want a chicken farm, nope, that's not in the uses you proposed.
It's half, cafe and market.
Allows within the community house would include, but it-
It's cafe and market.
With similar, within accordance with the Hilltop building.
It is a lot.
How big is this lot?
So you're telling me it could be this and only this?
That's right.
But there's a, and there's a size limit.
Yeah.
That's, like, you can only fit so many of those things in 3,600 square feet, or 5,600.
I have that, but I mean-
It's a little vague for-
Can't be a used car lot.
That's right.
Well, it's 3,600 square feet.
Not in, not in the least. It's not, not included in that use.
And so you're saying that the uses that are listed right here are the all that can go on that lot?
That's correct.
Okay. All right.
And then when it says it would revert to the same designation as the remaining lots, that means that would be residential?
Residential.
Okay.
So typically, like, I'm envisioning like a mill, like, similar to the mill? I mean, it's got those same kind of uses, yoga.
And I think that's, that's a good, it's, I can get up here and read, I can't explain the vision, so I think letting the applicant do that.
Jason, come up. Do we have any other questions for Hunter?
No, I should do it.
Okay, it's developed, does the, would Jason like to come up and speak to any of this? Or anyone else?
Good evening, I'm Trey Genright, Jake Consulting. So this is a PUD request for you as an annexation to the city. This project was developed in accordance with the city's extraterritorial jurisdictions, unzoned property Baldwin County. And so in order to annex in, the unzoned county setbacks do not align with your R1 setbacks, and so we have to do a PUD so that those setbacks will align and we can actually be in compliance with your zoning ordinance. That is the reason for the PUD. In addition, Jason is voluntarily offering to you Lot 29 as over-restricting this property. Currently, as it is, it's unzoned Baldwin County, can pretty much build what you want to out there, but that is not the intent, I think you've all been by the development, it's very nice, it's very first-class, and so he is voluntarily restricting this, this lot in there. He thinks there's a really big opportunity for a completely highly restrictive use there. He has identified it as a cafe or bread and breakfast type of facility there with very limited square footage, confining it with setbacks and buildings, building heights. If none of that works, and this very limited list of opportunities there, then it's going to be a residential home, single-family home. And so I think that's what's there.
Sounds good.
And so I think if y'all have seen what he's built there, it's going to be first-class, and so I encourage you to consider his request.
Does anybody have any questions? And do we need a public hearing for this?
Yes.
Okay. Let's open the public hearing. Would anyone in the public like to speak to this item? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. I just wanted to comment, I've seen developments in other areas, not here, that have that kind of a community house where you can, you know, maybe you live in a smaller house and guests can stay there, or there's a common meeting place, and I think that's a neat idea, I'd like to see more like that.
I'd like to commend on how beautiful the walkway is, it's, it's something that I wish more developers were picking up on, I think you've done a really good job with it.
All right, do we have a motion or a comment?
I move that we recommend to the city council that we approve case of ZC 21, or they approved a ZC 21.14 resuming to PUD with conditional annexation.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, it passes. Our recommendation passes. Thank you. Okay, we are going to try to be, do we need a moment, or do you need to explain what we're doing?
Yes, Madam Chairman, and I'm going to recuse myself on these four Harvest Green matters as well.
Okay. And so to, in the interest of time and expediency, we're going to go through the presentations and the public hearing for all four of the Harvest Green together, and then we have to vote on them separately. So just so everyone is clear about that.
I got, I want to ask a question first.
Okay.
You want me to take over for you on your legal?
Oh, Lord.
Negative.
I'm just curious, I asked Hunter this question today, why, why have these four, why has this one property, what I consider to be one property, why does it come as four applications? I don't get that. I just need somebody to explain that.
Well, let's let him present, and then maybe ask Larry.
I've never heard all the stuff before, I want to know why it was brought in this manner.
That's, I don't have a, I don't have an answer for that question.
I don't know when we'll ask the developer, when, we get that.
I would save that question, I would save that question for-
I got it.
All right, so this is the preliminary plat approval, I'm going to give Hunter a break for a little while, did a great job. This is for Harvest Green, it was recently a PUD, approved PUD, that was approved in September. It included a site plan that development is built in substantial conformance to. Larry Smith with SC Civil is the engineer of record, he is present tonight along with David Dill, the surveyor of record. On the screen, you can see on the left is the aerial, has not been updated to reflect the new PUD zoning. On the right side of the screen is the aerial view of the site, is just low, the east side development is on the east side of the waters, across from 181, and the west side is one parcel north of the waters. As I said, it's a PUD, this is the PUD site plan that was approved, there are four separate phases, there's Harvest Green East, Phase One and Two, and Harvest Green West, Phase One and Two. The PUD was 375 single-family lots with one future lot designated for a fire station that is located in Harvest Green East, Phase One, and is Lot 120 in their 120 lots. Harvest Green East, Phase Two, is 108 lots. Harvest Green West, Phase One, is 77 lots, with Harvest Green West, Phase Two, as 71 lots.
When we wrote that, the fire station property will be devoted, or dedicated to the volunteer fire, not the City of Fairhope.
Okay.
Sorry.
Correction.
Just want a clarification.
Yeah, semantics.
The next four slides are the individual plats for each one of the phases, we can come back to these for any questions that we may have. At Harvest Green East, Phase One, Harvest Green East, Phase Two, Harvest Green West, Phase One, and Harvest Green West, Phase Two. Majority of these comments are the same for each of the phases as they are continuous to each other, so they are mostly the same. I will point out a few differences when we get to them. For utilities, all the connections in work in ALDOT right-of-way will require permitting from ALDOT. Water in sewer is provided by Fairhope, will require any aid construction cost. Power is Riviera Utilities, gas is not requested for this development. There was a traffic, study was completed and warranted right turn lanes for all entrances into the proposed development. It also recommended was a southbound left turn lane at the intersection of Highway 181 and Falling Waters Boulevard, which is the entrance to the Waters neighborhood. ALDOT has been contacted, has met with the applicant to discuss the project, currently a traffic signal is not warranted by the provided TIS. Keep in mind, this traffic study considered all phases of development, so when I say all turn, all right turn lanes for all entrances, that is east and west, all the improvements will require permitting and approval through ALDOT. The site drainage, there's been a design for Harvest Green East and one for Harvest Green West, two separate systems, obviously being separated by Highway 181. The drainage is collected in a series of inlets and underground drain pipes that will discharge into five proposed wet ponds for Harvest Green East and four proposed wet ponds, Harvest Green West. The site does contain existing wetlands and provides the required buffering and signage. The drainage was reviewed by a third party, Neil Schaefer. The initial comments are included in the report and were discussed by the applicant. Secondary comments are minor and as condition of approval must be addressed by the applicant and approved by City of Fairhope Public Works Director. And again, drainage work in ALDOT right-of-way will require ALDOT permitting and approval. Some general comments is Harvest Green East, Phase One, and Harvest Green West, Phase One, they're planned to start the construction at the same time, so on each side of 181, they plan on starting Phase One and Phase One, and its anticipated start time is February 2022, with final plat being submitted February of 2023. Moving on to Harvest Green East, Phase Two, and Harvest Green West, Phase Two, again, starting both of the secondary phases for both sides of the road at the same time, with the construction to begin at the same time and is anticipated to start February of 23, and final plat submitted February of 24. And just a reminder, the preliminary plat does expire after two years. I have on the screen all the conditions of approval listed for all four phases, we can go through those individually. I do want to amend number three, during some final reviews of some of the landscaping and buffering, it was noted that some of the buffering was to be installed at the time of home build, that's actually inside of a common area, not the back of individual lots, and staff felt with it being a screening and buffering for the neighbors of the property, it needs to be installed before final plat, before homes start getting built, and you don't have a mismatch of lots with a fence section here- it needs to be installed before final plat, before homes start getting built and you don't have a mismatch of lots with a fence section here than an 80-foot fence section here. So I'm moving to amend the sidewalk and street trees condition to also include all of the required buffer and fencing inside of common areas. So here we go. Staff recommendation of case SD 21.42 Harvest Green East Phase One. Staff's recommendation for approval with the following conditions. One is the traffic improvements recommended or required by the traffic study and/or ALDOT will be installed by the developer. Two, final placement, capacity and aid to construction costs for all utilities shall be approved by the respective superintendent. Aid to construction costs shall be determined prior to application for building permit. Three, all sidewalks, street trees and required buffering or fencing are required to be installed prior to final plat application. And do you want me to read all the recommendations and then you vote on them individually?
Well, go ahead and read them because then we'll do the public hearing and we'll have all this up together.
So case SD 21.43 Harvest Green East Phase Two. Staff's recommendation for approve with the following conditions. Final placement, capacity and aid to construction costs for all utilities shall be approved by the respective superintendent. Aid to construction costs shall be determined prior to application of building permit. All sidewalks, street trees and required buffering or fencing are required, required to be installed prior to final plat application. And three is approval of SD 21.42 Harvest Green East Phase One. For case SD 20.44 Harvest Green West Phase One is approved with the following conditions. Traffic improvements recommended or required by the traffic study and/or ALDOT will be installed by the developer. Two, final placement, capacity and aid to construction costs for all utilities shall be approved by the respective superintendent. Aid to construction costs shall be determined prior to application of building permit. Three, all sidewalks, street trees and buffering or required fencing is required to be installed prior to final plat application. For case SD 21.45 Harvest Green West Phase One recommends for approval with the following conditions. The final placement, capacity and aid to construction costs for all utilities shall be approved by the respective superintendent. Aid to construction costs shall be determined prior to the application of building permit. Two, all sidewalks, street trees and required buffering or fencing are required to be installed prior to final plat application. Three is approval of SD 21.44 Harvest Green West Phase One. And the reasoning behind the conditions of approval for the both second phases is without the first phases being approved and completed, couldn't start on the second phase. And staff is happy to answer any question that you have, and as I mentioned, the engineer of record is with us this evening.
I, I had a question for staff just before we get to the engineer. I thought somewhere in your review, we talked about the comments by Neil Schaefer on the drainage and that the preliminary comments have been addressed and there were secondary comments. But it doesn't appear to be in the conditions of approval unless I'm.
That is very true. Thank you. We need to add that as a fourth condition that those final drainage comments from the third party are addressed and approved by Richard Johnson, Public Works Director. And that'd be for case 2142, SD 2143, case SD 2144, and case SD 21.45. Thank you.
I just have a, when you're reading out your street and trees, you're mentioning a fencing that's not in our paperwork. When you say.
The landscape plans showed a required buffer, especially on Harvest Green East on the northern border and on part of the border along 181. That is a six-foot high wood privacy fence with plantings of shrubs on the other side.
Okay. Ours just says sidewalks and street trees are required to be installed during final plat application.
Talking about the conditions of approval listing report? Right, that's, again, I was, but I was going to amend what this final, final was to include that buffering. We noticed that buffering was in a common area towards the latter part of our review and wasn't actually on the individual lots. And didn't want the buffering to be a polka dotted line going down that northern border.
May I also have questions for Mike? With the developer, should we ask, would the developer like to speak to this before we have the public hearing? Okay. We can ask him questions after the public hearing.
Let's open it and close it. Let's open and close it.
Well, just hang on.
No, 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 let's open and close it first and then we can go with him.
Yeah, we can ask him, so we'd like to open the public hearing. Would the, would the public like to speak to this item? We'll close the public hearing. Okay, and now we can ask questions to, clarifying questions.
Here we go.
To Larry.
Exact street address and everything? Larry Smith, civil engineer for the project.
You heard my question beginning, to begin with.
Uh, repeat. Basically, so we can have them, the final plats approved in four different sittings versus having them tied all together.
Okay, but you, but, but you know that, that at the end, at the end, if your preliminary plat exceeds two years and you come back for a, an extension, that more than likely you'll be required to adhere to whatever of the rules and regulations of the city are at that particular time, right?
So I, I think where you're going with it is why do developers come in with multiple phases all at once? And my understanding of it, I, I've never developed a thing in my life, so, but my understanding is when they go to the banks to get their construction loans, the phase one is always the most expensive and economically it doesn't work because you have all the turn lanes included, you have all the infrastructure, everything's lumped into phase one. For them to be able to get their approvals from the bank, they have to have a approved subdivision that makes the, the numbers work. And so they need all those phases lumped in behind them to make the numbers work because if they were just to go build phase one, they would lose money. It's, it, today, by the time they're done with phase one, they haven't made money on this development. It's when phase two kicks in that they make money. The banks see that. And the banks, we require an approval of phase one and phase two. And so that's why they come in like this. I, I think I understand what you're asking, but that's the reason. They'll, they'll never get financing approved for them.
We dealt with this, we dealt, you remember, we dealt with this lot in the county and so, and especially during 08 and 09 when things were, well, before things fell. But my understanding now would be, help me out here, Hunter, would be that if you've got all four phases approved tonight, that in 2023, November of 2023, two years down the line, um, and you're, you don't have anything working on, say, one or two of those phases?
Yeah.
And the rules and the regs of the city have changed. You may not be developing under the same guidelines that you're, that you're adhering to now.
Can't start if he doesn't do it this way. He's saying he doesn't have the money to even start.
Yeah.
That's what he's saying.
I think that is the risk.
Well, but it, I mean, it's a catch, it, it's a double edged sword.
I think they know.
And there are a lot of instances, for example, if, if, if in 20, first part of 2023, we decide to greatly modify the subdivision regulations within the city and, and it, and it is a, a part of what you're doing, then they don't, if, if they come back for a, for a.
Extension. Extension. Extension.
An extension. If they come back for an extension, then there's a good chance they're going to be looking at something that's going to be substantially different than what they're getting tonight.
And that's a good thing.
Until everybody understood that at one point, when things were going real crazy and then all of a sudden the brakes hit back in 08, 09, and then people got caught and it, it created a heck of a problem. Anyway, I, I was curious to know why you, you came with four different.
Well, it, it, it's really not four phases. I mean, it, it, the 181 breaks it up, but both sides are getting, it's really two phases. Both sides will be starting construction. They're both out for bid. And they'll be starting construction on phase one simultaneously on either side. And so it's really just two phases. But what you're saying is still relevant, but with the current timeframe, they're planning on rolling from phase one to phase two. Construction won't ever actually stop out there, but it's given us the delineation of where we can actually come in with a final plat and they can start building houses while they're building the rest of it. But a lot of this infrastructure is going in simultaneously, through out because we have sewer systems that stretch through phase two to be able to build phase one. And so parts of phase two are going to be under construction during phase one. It gets complicated, but like our lift stations are at the back of the neighborhoods in the lowest parts, which are phase two. So all those are being constructed with phase one. So it really will be a continuous effort, but it gives us the delineation line of where we can be complete. We can come back, get final plat approval on each side. And so construction will, will be going on in both phase one and phase two.
Well, I mean, there's nothing to preclude you off from doing what you did, but I just didn't understand it.
I think you all understand, what's on Twitter, Corbrook, not Corbrook, that the 25 lot subdivision that you had the extension and they had to meet the final plat requirements of putting loan branch. And had to meet the codes at the time, which was installing sidewalks before final plat. So there was some changes. And that's, I think that's the risk of the developer.
I think as long as everybody understands it and they, and they know that, but it caused great angst in 2008.
I say a heck of a lot better than the alternative, which is you get something, I mean, anyway, I think it's a, there is a risk to the developer. I think it's a positive thing for the city.
Oh, yeah, it is. But you don't want to see anybody go in the tank.
No, but we also don't want to see somebody grandfathered in with old regulations that have been improved and they're still building it in the future.
Okay, thank you. Want me to think of some more questions?
No.
We're almost done.
Public, so do we have a motion? Public hearing was closed, just to be clear.
We don't have a motion.
Oh, excuse me. So we have, we have four, as a reminder, we have four items for, to, to vote on. And we need to go one by one.
Can I do it this way? Can I make a motion for one, to make a motion for the other and then we vote them all at the same time?
Each one has to be a separate process.
We can just go down the road and let everybody do one.
All right, I got your first one. SD 2142 Harvest Green East Phase One, I move with approved subject staff recommendation.
Plus that, the comments.
City Council.
Approve. A second?
Yes, say you second.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
SD 2143 Harvest Green East Phase Two, I move with approved subject staff recommendations.
And the additional, and, and we're recommending to City Council for approval, right?
No.
No, we're approving.
This is a subdivision. This is preliminary plat that stops, stops here. So we need to approve it with staff's pronounced recommendations with the addition of item four to include the approval of the drainage by Public Works Director.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And passes.
Move to approve case 21, SD 21.44 Harvest Green West Phase One, subject to staff recommendations, one through three.
Plus.
Four. Four, plus four.
With the drainage.
With the drainage to Richard Johnson.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes?
I just have a question. Can we get a, the overview instead of all the cutups of all these? Can we get a photo of the actual master plan on both sides of the road?
There it is.
This is where we did that. We, we talked a lot about those connections to the waters.
That's a good point. Nobody called it out, but it does connect, Harvest Dub Out Street now.
It does. Yes, they created a street, right? Yes.
That's not anywhere in our packet, right? I never saw that.
Not, not altogether.
Okay.
I think it was electronically, it was there somewhere.
In the email packet.
Yep. I don't do the email packet, so sorry. 167.
Okay, one more time.
Move case, SD 21.45, 45 Harvest Green West Phase One. Approval subject to staff recommendation, add number four, one through four for the drainage.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and it passes.
That was phase two for the record.
There's a typo on the slide.
Case number was correct.
I won't lie, that was a copy being faced there.
Okay, no, we have one more. And then we have a whole new business. So we, yeah, yeah, so Mike's going to review this one. Sorry, that didn't sound very respectful, Larry.
So this is a minor subdivision approval. It's SD 21.47 Eastern Shore Shopping Center. The owner is Fairhope Single Tax, Robert N. Graham, Larry Smith with SE Civil and David Deal is with us tonight on behalf of the applicant. Says a two lot major subdivision. The property is at the southeast corner of County Road 48 and State Highway 98. Property is currently zoned B2. It's been reviewed for compliance with our subdivision regulations and all applicable ordinances. On the screen, on the left side is the zoning, that pale yellow, it represents B2 zoning. On the right side of your screen, you can see that it is half a parking lot that we'd mentioned earlier and half a shopping center with a couple outbuildings. The area highlighted in red, I went ahead and highlighted that. It's a little harder to see with all the parking space lines and everything drawn onto the plat. That is the area that the new proposed parcel is going to be. Its zoning will stay B2. This is a two lot subdivision. The required setbacks, it fronts on Greeno or Highway 98 is a 45-foot where the highway construction setback line is. Water, sewer, electric and gas is all serviced by Fairhope. Telephone would be AT&amp;T. A utility note is that the removal or relocation for any utilities will be at the owner's expense for anything that's existing or for future development. There is currently, we know, a fire hydrant and also maybe some gas utility lines that may have to be moved. They have been in discussion with our utilities about that. Drainage, the existing flow patterns are not being changed. Just wanted to point out, property is in a flood zone AE and at future permitting, building department would verify, verify appropriate finished floor elevations. Some general comments, the site's an existing shopping center with a mix of uses. Sidewalks currently already exist along the right of ways on the north and west side of the property. The parking will be altered and reviewed with future development, as noted on the plat. Currently, the required spaces exceed what our zoning ordinance would require. Lot two will reduce that number by 92. The reparking, the required parking changes with the use and the mix of uses and peak time hours allowed for shared parking. And future development could possibly trigger all other actual ordinances to come into play and could trigger a site plan review. Staff's recommendation is approval of case SD 21.47. I'd be happy to answer any questions commissioners may have.
Just really briefly, it's not even a question. It's just that I'm, that parking lot is the, you know, no offense to the owner, is my least, it's just a god awful parking lot. It's a death trap with the painted over lines and you, they've changed like three or four times and I, so anyway. Venting aside, I'm so happy to see some of that excess capacity absorbed to make it, you know, a little more attractive. I think it'll be good for the existing tenants there. And hope that we get somebody who sees the opportunity to open to the pedestrian trails, even like the, the covered seating has it at Wingfingers and just present a little more human scale to the street. No raised tires.
No, yeah, the, the only thing is, this is, it may be heavy traffic coming in this area. Are we, you know, that's already, I mean, we already know Fairhope are, excuse me, I'm tired. Greeno Road is heavy, the egress and ingress coming out of there. I guess we're going to do a TIS and see what we need to do as far as doing.
Per, per the subdivision regulations, this two lot minor subdivision does not trigger.
I know if it may not, we still may need to do it, is what I'm saying, because with the volume that we have, with what we think.
There's already, the, the, in this situation, that shopping center already has, there's no more improvements to be made. The ingress and egress is already there. no more improvements to be made. The ingress and egress is already there. Kind of grandfathered in, but ALDOT, ALDOT might not allow both of those ingress and egress right now. With the minor, we don't have the triggers to mandate an additional.
Man.
Are we gonna change with the...
No. What I'm, I'm just worried about, I'm just worried about, that's gonna be a, I want to say something, but that's gonna be a cluster. I mean, to be honest, if my imagination, if I can, with discernment, I'm visualizing.
With any, with any reviews, whether that site plan review or just building permit, we will be considering those things and how circulation works and doing everything we can to ensure those are not impacting Greeno.
Right. And I want to put that on public record, that we're gonna do that. So...
That will be done.
Yeah.
Well, and back to my earlier...
And ALDOT will be reviewing this.
When we get to a site plan review, that is, there's unsafe, that parking lot is confusing.
That's what I'm talking about. And all of that, what we put in there, it's gonna be...
If we get the site plan review. That's an if we get the site plan review. That's not a when. That's an if. Site plan review for a building...
Existing.
It does not. Now, there are certain triggers in our zoning ordinance, which if they're met, automatically require a site plan review. But just a blanket building permit does not automatically require that to happen. We've had, I think the Smart Bank, they built without a site plan review, is depending on how the development plays out.
We'll talk about it. All right. Very good.
Now, we mentioned in there earlier when ALDOT is getting more and more concerned about redevelopment and how redevelopment is impacting...
They should.
State highways.
Right.
But wouldn't that be where we would come in with the health, safety, and welfare of that strip of, or does that...
If it was a...
We'd have to have a 12-rex or something in order for it to...
Like I said, if there is a site plan review that brings it to you.
To you, okay.
So what, so but at this point, when it's just a subdivision, so we're looking at the big parcel and the small parcel?
Minor, so...
Okay. But within the big parcel, you know, obviously they're gonna have to redraw, hopefully, those parking spaces that would now abut this area and not have a dead end aisle going into it.
Yeah.
So is there any way to have a review of how that gets, how will that get reviewed?
Staff, from the planning department's side, we will review once it comes to a building permit. We're going to review that site and the site plan.
Add some to it?
Now, site plan is only the plot plan, the schematic that they bring to us to review against our zoning code, not a site plan review that adds it a formal case that comes to planning commission and then ultimately ends up at City Council. But we will review like we do every building permit, compliance with our zoning ordinance against requiring any buffering, parking requirements, which again, once this comes in, will be, there's a note on the plat that requires to know what the total required parking is at the time of that development to ensure that we're not going over.
But I guess what I'm asking is the larger parking lot is not gonna get a building permit, but they will have to change it to accommodate this development because otherwise they would have aisles that dead ended to it.
There will be restriping, there will be...
So will there be a restriping permit that gets a chance to get some input?
We don't permit striping at parking lots.
What we gotta do when we look at whatever...
It'll totally change the layout.
Well, there's, for them to cut this out, the owner will have to do a restriping plan for himself. And the engineer with us tonight may already have an idea of what the owner, you know, is planning on doing if this gets, if this moves forward and gets...
So all I can think about is really what I'm, when Wingfinger got up, remember when it first opened? We had to send the police out there because the flow, it was terrible, to be honest. And with this, they have a consistent, I mean, that's gonna be consistent. So we need to think about that. We need to think about that.
We hope it's gonna be consistent. Wingfingers have died down and cut back their hours. So we went from being crazy mega when it first opened up to dropping back down now. So we hope it's gonna be consistent so we have more, another thriving business, you know, in Fairhope.
Right. I think it will.
So we can't, we can't count it all off of just opening a weekend off of what Wingfingers did, you know, for a couple of weeks.
And Rebecca, do what? Bring up what you're talking about with that parking. So we, when we review this, even if it's building permit, we look at that zoning ordinance, you know, all the existing buildings, they can't remove enough parking from those to reduce their parking. So all of those, even though there's an empty store there, there's still a square footage requirement for retail that they have to buy their park. Then bringing up the travel lanes and all of those things will be the thing, what we're looking at. Some of the, bringing up that, some of that parking, at least around this site, and this is where we haven't gotten to because we're not looking at a final plan, but bringing that up to code on, you know, some landscape within there, some, providing some drainage on this lot that's not there.
Can you go to the slide with the red box on it?
The 20-foot, you know, this was done before the tree preservation, or the preservation bump. That will be required as it's developed. So there will be more impervious than in there now.
I mean, that's all the stuff I'm excited about. I just, I am, I mean, obviously you see how the aisles die into that red line, and I'm assuming they won't anymore. And so that, I just wonder if there's any way, I mean, it is a sort of a, it's a hazardous parking lot. Don't know if, maybe we need, maybe we need the engineer to come up and speak to that. He's waving his hand in the back.
You know why it's hazardous?
Because there's reflected...
There's nobody that goes to that parking lot.
I do when I get confused.
When there's, when the striping is old and there's nobody that uses it, you have no idea where...
My issue is when you paint over striping and yet in certain light, it still reflects. It's very unclear which stripe you're supposed, the old stripe, the new stripe? Is that a parking spot or is it an aisle? It's changed.
Go ahead, Larry.
Most people just park wherever they want to.
I've seen different versions, so I don't...
Go ahead, Larry.
Yeah. So to answer your direct question, as far as where these parking bays are going to be going into the area of this out parcel, we are going to be reconfiguring. There'll be a drive out that now takes you around this parcel, and then those will have landscaped islands. We originally showed them a striped. I had a conversation with a developer, and on those, he definitely understands he wants to, as this shopping center redevelops, bring it into something a little more substantial. We're not talking about redoing every single island because that would actually be a lot of parking, additional parking that would need to be removed. But when, we're talking about the perimeter of this parcel, everything where we're touching their existing parking bays will be ending those existing parking bays in a landscaped island. And then obviously, this redevelopment of this parcel will conform, as Hunter mentioned, will have the required 20-foot landscape buffer, which is already, when you get to the rightaway side, it's already heavily landscaped. And then we'll have the additional 20-foot section that will also help with water quality. We're gonna be taking our stormwater into there. And so it'll be more of that type of buffer. And we're well aware of the concerns of traffic patterns. We've actually, I'm not, I think you obviously know what they're proposing there, but I'm not at liberty to say. But it sounds like you have an idea of what they're proposing. And we're looking at ways of wrapping to get it out of the public rightaway and onto the parcel itself.
Very good.
Okay.
Okay. Then this is, again, just not to beat a dead horse, because I think my beef is with a previous owner, when, you know, at one point even the like in and out lanes changed, like this was, this was supposed to be in one direction, it changed to the other over the course of a weekend and it got... Is there any regulatory mechanism with a large public parking lot, if somebody ups and restripes it in a way that is hazardous, does the city have any way to come in and say, you're telling people to run into each other. We shouldn't do this?
I'll be honest, I don't know. I'm sure there's, there's gotta be, there's always a health, safety, and welfare, you know, we're responsible. That might be, you know, never had to deal with that.
Yeah. So I guess if somebody run into me, then I...
Might just be a civilization. Enough people soon.
All right.
Thanks, Larry. All right.
Yeah. Does anybody have any other questions?
Yep.
Yeah. I mean, if you, like I said, if you, you know, want to make...
I make a motion to adjourn?
We have all new business.
We have, we have to vote.
Oh, I thought, okay.
Yeah, sorry, sorry.
Thought we were done.
I thought you were gonna make a motion to, but everybody's talking.
We have all new business.
We do. But we need to, what were you gonna say about the condition of approval?
To restripe the parking and, you know, I mean, I think we...
It's more that I want a review of it, of the existing parking lot.
We will certainly be looking at that.
At how they work together.
And we've already kind of mentioned that with everything faded there, striping might need be done. So we started those conversations, but until we get kind of the final plan and something else, it's hard to know where we're at. But it's certainly on our radar as well.
Yes.
I just can't remember. I'll make sure. Did you open the public hearing?
Yes.
I opened and closed it.
We opened and closed it. Yes.
Yeah.
Now we can make a motion?
Yes.
Your turn.
Go for it.
I move we approve case SD 21.47.
With staff's recommendation?
With, well, there aren't any.
Review, review parking lot.
That, yeah, with the considerations of review.
Parking lot and traffic.
You can add that in there.
And traffic.
Nobody's seconding.
Say the second.
Everybody's, we're having, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So it passes. So we have all new business.
And I will make this really, really quick.
Sorry.
Just a quick advertisement.
Go ahead.
The...
The comp plan.
The comp plan meetings, we do have a few upcoming. This Thursday at 6:00 PM Rotary Youth Club, 10:00 AM at Nick Center the following Friday, November 5th, then December 2nd, 10:00 AM at Homestead Village, December 2nd at 6:00 PM at Thompson Hall Fire Station. Those are all public meetings. We welcome anyone. And we also have a website, planfairhope.com, where they can get information on our previous meetings and any follow-up, and actually the ability to take a survey that's out there on the website. We appreciate all the input we can get.
Well, and I'm gonna add to your plug really briefly, because the concerns we heard tonight about water quality, storm, not drinking water, stormwater quality, tree preservation, form-based code, pedestrian safety, bicycle transportation, alternative modes of transportation, this is the forum.
Regulations.
Yeah. Redoing our subdivision regulations, so we have more teeth in zoning. All of this is, this is a, you know, infrequent opportunity, a unique opportunity to actually address those things. So I want to encourage everybody to please come out.
Thank you. And those ideas on how to, what they want to see specifics, specifics help us.
Yeah. Positive ideas in particular are welcomed.
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay. Do we have a move to adjourn?
Yes.
I move we adjourn.
Do we have to second that? Say it.
Say it.
All right. Where adjourn?
Hurry.
Can I do this? It's not a...